Hey Phil.
Good. That was nice.
Are you getting excited, sad?
I think, I'm still in the missing like, I'm still at the point like I feel like I'm gonna miss.
Not quite.
Not quite. I've had a couple. Yeah. Yeah.
I honed in on, I had breakfast with Karen Allen. And so I.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 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 all good. Yeah, I'm in, I'm in. That'll be fun.
I'm not staying.
Stay, you know, it's funny, like I'll go along and then all of a sudden I'll go to one event and I'm like, this, like, I'm there, all of a sudden I'm just like, oh, I'm gonna miss this, you know, I'll miss everyone.
It's not a lie, because I'm gonna tell you.
No, yeah, yeah.
To your expertise in some other way.
Absolutely, absolutely. She had a little like. You know, like a little.
It was a lot there.
Oh, sold out. She's like. Sold out, we're trying to check it out. I was like. Our last kind of celebration out there. I had, I had a, I actually had these little flashbacks.
The lights?
I know. It's kind of a low.
Hey, Sherry, I haven't seen you. How are you? Okay, that makes sense. What's going, Miguel?
I'm tired today.
Are you? You said a lot, you said you had some word prep yourself, right?
It's, it's, it's exhausting, like, it's a different kind of exhaustion, you know, it's like, like, the planning and crap thing, like.
That, well, you know, yes, and the thing is that we have, at the, at the community college level, so like, some of these cases that we hear in closed session, time's tough, legitimately, time's tough.
Oh, I'm sure.
All day long.
We have a 200 open investigation. 200.
Because we have part-time faculty.
Oh, yeah.
Full-time faculty, and then a, you know, administrators, classified and academic.
Oh.
And then students, right on ice.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you're really, like, big people, they can have big problems.
Oh, we ordered some.
We ordered coffee. We ordered coffee.
Are you sure? Okay.
Got your notes? Did you print your, this time?
Well, that's what I was asking the Dana, I'm like, am I crazy because every school district, that I've worked for, we don't have a computer.
Yeah, well, I, I've never.
You know.
Yeah.
Optics and all.
Yeah, pero no. And then.
My binder?
Oh, you brought a binder?
Yes, my binder, with the flag. Just in my home.
You printed that? I didn't print any of it. Usually we get a. So, any of the presentations.
They give you?
They give you, so you don't have to print them, or you'll have doubles. I just read it, I just read it and then, like, take notes and stuff, or like, usually what I'll do is like, I'll print, I'll print the whatever emails or whatever questions we have, and then I'll make my notes. And then if I have a chance, like, I'll, I'll like, write my notes and then I'll try to like, make notes and like, type them, if I can. Just like. But, most of the time, I just, I write, I ask, like, whatever question that we have. Our own legal fund for what? Um, we, for immigration, no, because, well, you know, we pay one of the agenda items, and you know immigration. So, we've been doing that. No, no, es para que ellos vengan y tengan, um, office hours. Just, it's just for intake and office hours at the community center. Pero son cinco mil de tal hora, de tal mes a tal mes. And then you'll see another one, okay?
Oh, interesting. We don't, we don't ever do.
We extend it, so it's not like a year, and then depending on the need, so like, if we do, um, if we do like a workshop, or if we do this. Um, if we do this, or if we do that. I have my own, thank you very much. He's being, he's being, he's being stingy with the, with the minutes that we stole from Ben.
With her own men.
That we stole from Ben.
Okay, we're almost ready, almost ready to start. We can have everyone start taking a seat. Exciting evening, I know. Who are, who are those people? I don't think I recognize any, like, that whole group back there. It's a whole group of people, I don't know.
There's what, Neil back there.
Yeah, but with.
Vanessa.
That whole group?
There's Emily.
Oh, I don't know, red shirt, black shirt.
Vanessa, I believe that's Vanessa, maybe Mike.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Okay, are we ready, Anna? Ready to start up again? Okay, we're gonna come to order. I know you guys are so excited back there in the back of the room. Right? We're gonna go ahead and get started. I do have a report from closed session. The board took action by a vote of 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement and release agreement by, and be, and between the Fullerton School District and the parents of student ID number 3000546. Also, the board took action by a vote of 5-0 to uphold the superintendent's decision on a confidential, confidential personnel investigation for employee 730. That was our report from closed session. Thank you guys for coming. We had our pledge outside, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We do have a board member, we have, because we have one board member attending and participating in tonight's meeting remotely, all votes this evening will be done through a roll call vote. Okay, guys, roll call vote. The board president will call out each board member's name, and one at a time, each board member will say their vote aloud, one at a time, to ensure that the votes can be recorded accurately for the minutes. Okay, so if you haven't figured it out, our trustee Cho is actually on Zoom, so he is joining us this evening. Education Code Sections 35023, 35140, and 35143, and Board Bylaws 9121 and 9123 require that the Board of Trustees determine the following items at its organizational meeting for the 2025 calendar year. We will elect a president, a vice president, and a clerk. We will appoint the superintendent as secretary for the Board of Trustees. We will approve the proposed 2026 board meeting dates and location. And I do believe we might have a little discussion on that one. And then we will select a representative and an alternate for our County Committee on School District Organization. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and we'll start. We're gonna start with our first election, and after we elect our new president, then we'll kind of do a little change in of the guards, and then our new president will finish off our meeting this evening. So, do I have a motion for a president nominee?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ruthie Hanchett for president.
Okay, it's been moved. There's a second. So it's been moved and seconded, now we.
Second.
Okay, that we, that we approve Ruthie Hanchett for our board president for the 2025, 2026 school year. All right, all those in favor, roll call vote. We'll start with, we'll start with, with James. James?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Miguel?
Aye.
Vanessa?
Aye.
Ruthie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So with that, congratulations to our new board president. Now, we have new handy dandy desks, so watch this. So much.
I love it.
Thank you.
All right. Javel, little thing. Don't hit anybody with it. There's lawsuits when that happens.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my board for nominating and voting for me. We talked about taking a break, but I don't think we need it. We're pretty good at moving around, so. That we'll just continue on with our election of our board and changing of our positions. So, next, we're gonna ask for nominations for vice president of our Board of Trustees. Do I have a nomination or a motion for vice president?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Vanessa Estrella, our vice president.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, so we can have discussion or any alternative motions, should we have those?
I would actually like to make a second motion, or.
Alternative?
An alternative motion. I would like to nominate James Cho as vice president. I know we had this conversation before, I would love to be vice president. But, we, we had this conversation at one of our previous meetings, where we would have, I believe it was, I would stay as clerk for this year, since Aruni, I took over Aruni's position, and so I would like to finish off the year as being clerk, and then James would be the vice president. I believe we've had this conversation before, but if anybody wants to change that, I am okay with that. I just wanted to follow procedure, since he is not here, he is listening. Hi, James. So, I, I would like to make a second motion, only because, again, this conversation's already been had, and I would like to nominate James Cho to be vice president.
Okay, then we need a second to continue that.
I second if James is okay with that.
Okay, seconded. James, would you like?
I'd be honored.
Okay.
He said yeah.
He said. So the vote before us then is for this amended motion.
Yes.
For James Cho for vice president of our Board of Trustees. We will take a vote then, unless there's any further discussion. Okay, so, we'll start with Miguel.
Aye.
Vanessa?
Aye.
Bev?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Okay, and myself, Ruthie Hanchett, aye. Okay, so congratulations to James Cho as vice president of our board. Okay, and then I'm, now I'm looking for nominations for clerk, which we've already had this discussion, so I will just go ahead and make a motion to nominate Vanessa Estrella for our clerk of our board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, then, let's start with James for clerk of the board, Vanessa Estrella.
Aye.
Okay, trustee Berryman?
Aye.
Miguel?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and myself, Ruthie Hanchett, aye. Okay, congratulations, Vanessa Estrella, our clerk. Yeah, she will be signing many documents on our behalf. Okay, and then we need to decide, well, it's not so much a decision, we need to appoint Dr. Bob Pletka, our superintendent, as the board secretary. He will be serving from now, December 9th, through January 31st, 2026. When, as he is retiring, Dr. Chad Hammett will then be the effective superintendent and take over this role of board secretary, starting on February 1st, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I move to approve that.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. James, what is your vote?
Aye.
Okay. Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Trustee Estrella?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, vote aye, yes. Okay, so we've got five votes yes. Okay, we have established our new board then. The next, what we're gonna do is look at our dates for the coming calendar year for 2026. We have been presented dates as of last time we had our board meeting, we've had a chance to review them, and I believe there were some suggested changes, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the dates, and then we can have discussion about any. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the 2026 dates as proposed?
Was there a, a change, somebody?
Yes.
Wanted a change from May?
Yeah, I was think, thinking we would have the motion to put it on the table and then make the changes. But, I can just let you all know, I, James, I think, had asked that we look at May 12, and instead of May 12, it was originally proposed that it would be instead Tuesday, May 19. If you want to take a moment to look at your calendars, see if that works. James, do you want to add any further discussion to that?
Is that too close to the end of school? I mean, does it work for?
We can make it work.
Calendar?
We can make it work.
Because that's when the LCAP will be presented?
From LCAP, it actually might be helpful, but so, that's a.
Little more time?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other concerns from staff aware of? Okay, do any of my trustees have any concerns or objections, reasons why that won't work for you? No? Okay, so, then the amendment, I would say I'm gonna make a motion to amend the board meeting dates as presented, making the change from May 12 to May 19.
I'm, I move, I move to, or second, I second.
Okay. No further discussion? We'll vote. Okay, if you are in favor of the amended motion to accept these dates with the changes from May 12 to May 19, you can say aye, so I'll start with trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Estrella?
Aye.
Aye.
James Cho?
Aye.
Okay, and myself, aye. Okay, we've got our dates. Put them in your calendars, folks, right? Okay. The next organizational item we need to discuss is our representation at the County Committee on School District Organization for 2025. This position was served by our former trustee, Aruni Chakur, and I was the alternate, I was never called upon to serve in this role. But we are looking for a representative for the year of 2026, and then an alternate, alternate for the year of 2026. I, maybe we can do discussion before we propose a name. Trustee Berryman, I'm assuming you've served in this role in the past, do you want to explain a little bit more for our new trustees, about their responsibilities?
I don't know if I ever, I'm sure I've served it. I think it only comes into effect when they need to pull together school districts to approve or disapprove, when they change boundaries and when they re-district schools. And so in my minute that I've been here, I probably have not had to do any of that work. So, it's very few and far between, when it, when it does come up.
Okay, that was my understanding as well, so it would be something that the County Board of Education would call upon us to come and serve in a committee, should there be requirements for changes or discussion of those. Okay.
Is it my understanding from last year, that it's usually the vice president and the clerk who serve, or does it need to be, no? Okay.
I don't know that it needs.
I don't remember if we had this, I remember having this discussion last.
Great job for you, Vanessa.
Thanks, Bev. Like to serve with me?
I'll be your alternate if you want.
Yeah, great, yeah. Okay, well, I'll make the.
I mean, unless Miguel and James are interested in.
Let's give him a little time.
Yeah. I think it'd be great to have that suggestion, so I'll make the motion for a slate for our representative for 2026 to trustee Estrella, and our alternative to be trustee Berryman. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, great. Let's vote then, unless any further discussion? James, any discussion?
No.
Okay, then I'll start with Berryman.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Alvarez?
Yes.
Yes.
James Cho?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for myself. Great. Okay, we have reorganized then. We have a few more to go later on, but at this point, we will be hearing reports from our superintendent, and then we will hear from information from our Board of Trustees, as a chance for us to share on what we've been up to and issues and topics we like to bring to the public, and then we'll hear from our associations after that.
So, just, so two things. First of all, I want to acknowledge and thank Chad and his team and all the good work that they had done around PBIS. I want to thank every teacher and principal and our classified staff that worked together to create systems. PBIS is a set of systems, and those systems help to guide when challenging situations. It's not a cure-all, but without systems, it would be chaos, so just a lot of good work around thinking about those things. The second piece, I want to acknowledge Jeremy and his team, and he did acknowledge Pablo, and those of you who know Pablo, is very innovative, and the, ironically, we, sometimes we think of tech as innovation, but the tiny home is innovation, and Pablo's brainchild around that, and the entire team that put together a tiny home that services our families, two of our families. So that spirit of innovation comes, and Jeremy provides the sorts of systems and leadership that make it possible and help people to thrive, and so it is a tremendous honor and the work that he has led with the entire team and with the entire school community and our, again, so many people that are involved. But I did want to acknowledge, because Jeremy acknowledged everybody, but I want to acknowledge him for a moment, and the leadership that he provides. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the work of our president, and every year, at this time, we want to acknowledge the work of the president. It is, while there is no more authority of a president, the president is a servant leader that is at, everybody's at a lot of events, the president is at a tremendous amount of events throughout the district. He's called upon to speak and to represent at a variety of things. So, one is, it's a servant leadership piece, and I think it continues the good work that Bev has done over the years. Her involvement in our community is deep and strong and connected. And somebody that was not a native of Fullerton, but after 13 years of being here, I have seen her build those sorts of relationships, whether it was at Critton, Crittenden, or whether it was at the collaborative and the leadership he has, she has done, or PTA and the work that she has done there. And so, again, this modeling of servant leadership and connection to our community, not only in her work, but also with her heart, she connects. I think each president usually has a hallmark of what they bring, and one of the things that I appreciate in her presidency is, while she does not always agree with everybody, she is a tremendous active listener, and she will take the time to hear, and people feel heard by her. That doesn't mean she will agree or do, but she does take that time because she does genuinely and authentically care about our community, and one of her hallmarks as a board member has been parent engagement, and it's been something that she has championed for as long as I've been here. And that she wants our parents not only to be engaged and to be involved, but to be part of the decision-making. And so that's, I think, one of the pieces. And then, one of the things I appreciate is, it's challenging work. What you do as board members, it's hard. And you're asked to stand for your beliefs, and, and at times, to call upon your own wisdom and life experience to do that. And so one of the things I appreciate is the values that she brings, and I know, I know who Bev is, and she stands by it, and I, for me personally, it's an inspiration to see people live their beliefs. So, thanks, Bev, and we do have a few things, have a little round of applause for Bev's service.
With all the board, okay.
People, your people. So, I realize, I think I made my first mistake as president, where I probably, I should have taken more time to pause after, and think, our president retiring, our. or finishing her service this year of trustee Berryman. Thank you for sharing those words. And, you know, I have been thinking this, about this too, Bev. And I just think about your presidency this year and so, so grateful for your leadership. You've certainly guided me in my three years, but especially this year as president. I was thinking about, like, a nickname, the No Drama Mama. Like, you've just given us this presence, a steady hand, wisdom and grace, and a groundedness that all will be well, that we will weather storms, and really given us a lot of confidence as a board when things have been hard, challenging. But you also bring a lot of levity and humor to situations, not to take ourselves too seriously and to have fun with it, too. So I appreciate that. And yeah, I think that there have been some, even this year, some challenges, some surprises. But you've helped us remain steady and focused, especially on just your deep, deep care and commitment for kids and for our staff as well. I really definitely see that, and you set that tone for all of us. And as Dr. Bob said, we trust you. We know you deeply, how much your heart is deeply in this, and we appreciate your servant leadership. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Okay, with that, would you like to start us off with our trustee reports? Or do you need a moment?
I probably do need a moment, but that's okay. Thank you. I'm not going to make a big speech, so you guys don't have to worry. We'll save that. I just, it was my pleasure to serve as a president. I think that we all kind of, we get our chance to do that. I think I've served probably four or five times as president, so it doesn't get any easier. So we never, we never take it for granted. I always tell people, I still get nervous up here. It's not, you know, I've been here for a while. It doesn't get, you know, you get, I don't get to the point where it's like so mundane that I could do it and not care about it. And so it's always when it's your turn to be president, you're on. And so I've always stayed, you know, I try to stay focused. I've tried to make sure that we all have a voice, because I think it's very important that as a board, we all do have that opportunity to speak. Like you said, we might not all agree, and that's okay. And I think that's what people need to realize, that having different perspectives on a board, we can't speak outside of this room. So when we have these deep discussions and we have these conversations, it is something that comes from our heart. And so I always come in with an empty piece of paper, because I really want to be able to talk to people about what they feel and how we can go forward. So I truly do care. I can't say that I'm a little excited about not having the extra meetings. But you guys all know that if you need me, Ruthie, I have always said I'm here for you. And if you just need a second opinion or want to, you know, throw something out there, I'll be more than happy to walk you through that. So thank you very much. And thank you to everybody for your wonderful words. I had people at the outside, we're here, that have been with me the whole time, knowing that it was my, the end of my presidency. So I am still going to be here in January, don't worry. But this will be the last for the presidency. So we have really had a busy time as board members, and I'm sure that we all have a lot to share about what we have been doing. I do want to give a couple of shout-outs as we were going through our food drives. You know, the times were tough, still tough. Thanksgiving came, October, November were really tough for our families. And so our community stepped up, and I think we've talked about that in our board meetings. I did want to give a special shout-out for the Morningside Retirement Community and for First Presbyterian Church, because those two groups really stepped forward and went and did extra food drives for us. In fact, First Pres, I think I had three or four carloads, I have a SUV, carloads full of food that I dropped off at the hub. And so thank you to those communities for really, truly stepping up for our families unconditionally. Whenever we need it, we just put a little call out and people step up, and they really do help. So this community, I'm so proud of them. I'm so proud of the work that we've done. I'm so proud of our district as being that coordination between that. So I'm giving them a shout-out. I represent the, our board and this region with, I think, 24 other individuals from Orange County. At the California School Boards Association, I'm considered a delegate. And so I get to have the honor of going to a couple of extra meetings a year and representing our view on things that are happening at the statewide level for California School Board. We all just got back from our conference, and I think everyone is excited, and we'll talk about that. I'm the only one who was able to go to delegate assembly, so I wanted to just report back to my board and to our audience here, because you give me that privilege of being able to go. So I want to make sure that you know that I went and I got something from it. This year, California School Board Association is truly embarking on a, on a mission to ask our state of California to step up and help out and take some accountability for the achievement of our California students. For many years, our CDE, California Department of Ed, the State Board, the, you know, all the powerhouses that are in Sacramento all run separately, right? And so everybody has a new initiative, everybody has this, everybody has that. But no one at the state has really taken accountability for student achievement. They all come back to us, right? Yes, yes, it is up to us to make sure our students achieve and to really concentrate on our staff. But it's also up to the state to take some accountability for that, right? And so to help, help their school districts in being able to identify what best practices are out there and how they, as a state, can come together and really help us. And so the California School Board Association is really taking that mission this year and going forward with it and bringing on initiatives to be able to bring all of our voices together as one, so that we can start advocating for that. And so I wanted to report out that that's pretty much our focus. So my focus at our conference that we just got back from was to pretty much go to workshops that really narrowed down and really talked about student achievement, right? And for me, student achievement is very important. I know it's important for our board as well. And so those are things that are going to be very important this year. And so I wanted to make sure that everything I did was with that lens for the majority of what we did. We also elected a new president for our association and a new vice president for our association. And so I think that might be it for my report for this evening, because I'm done talking. Thank you.
Trustee Alvarez, would you like to share?
And then my other colleagues will probably talk about the California School Board Association, but I just wanted to share out that I had the opportunity to attend the California School Board Association Annual Conference as well as the new trustee orientation. And really, the sessions provided me as a new trustee valuable insights on how we can be better supporters of what is happening at our school sites and then bringing more transparency to the public, listening to the community needs and bringing that together to support here at the district. We also were able to meet with other school boards across the state of California, one of the largest convenings of school boards in the state, and hear from gubernatorial candidates as well as the state superintendent of public instruction and got to hear their perspective on how they envision funding, how they envision their charge as they look forward to running for those open positions in the upcoming cycle. I won't take too much more time. We also had, Board President Hanchett and I had extra time with Dr. Rob and really appreciated that overview of the first interim report of our budget and really just commend the fiscal services team and our operations team on running a very clean budget and, you know, being able to see how all of this comes together with our categorical funds and our general fund and how healthy we are as a district. Not very many districts have that ability, so I just wanted to commend the work that you're doing and thank you for going over that with us yesterday.
Thank you, trustee Estrella.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say again, I have to bring it back to Bev. Don't do that. Don't roll your eyes. I feel like everyone here on the dais, everyone sitting up here can, will agree when I say that you are a vault of information and you have a plethora of knowledge, especially about this district, that I don't even know if anybody else does. I, when I found out that you still have your meeting notes from when, when the district hired our superintendent, I was like, oh, my goodness, she just brought my, like, informational knowledge of like her to like a whole new level. Like, who keeps notes for 13 years, right? Apparently Bev does. And so I am so grateful and so appreciative of your willingness and openness to help and support everyone, not just us here on the board who are new, but anyone who comes up to you. You know, you're just, call me, we'll have coffee. I know I've texted you, I texted you today because I had a question. I know that you are always available, and I want to thank you for that, because you've made my first year here on the dais so much easier. And I know that I can depend and rely on you for anything that I need, president or not. Just as a human being, you're an amazing human being, and I love you for that. So I want to say thank you with big capital words. Thank you. I love her. So thank you. Thank you for that. And again, I want to, I always try to begin my meeting with thanking everyone who is here, welcoming everyone. I appreciate that you all took the time out of your after-work busy schedules to come and be a part of this meeting. Oh, you okay? Okay. You know, but it's, I'm always grateful to have the opportunity to meet and gather with all of you, especially here on school board meetings, and to celebrate everything that is happening, all the amazing things that are happening at our district. Tonight, congratulations to all of our schools that received PBIS and were honored with the Apple Distinguished Awards. I know these achievements do not come easy, and it takes a village, as I've said before. It takes a collective effort from principals, teachers, classified staff, district leadership, families, and of course, our students to make these achievements come true. And so, again, congratulations to all of you and thank you for your commitment to excellence. I'm going to keep my report brief, because we are all talking about the CSBA conference we all attended last week. Yes, we had the opportunity to meet other board members and staff from across the state and to hear from leaders who have the same passion for not just leadership, but to serve our communities. One message that stayed with me came from the new CSBA president, Ms. Deborah Schaefer, and she reminded us that public education is the heartbeat of our democracy. She urged us to be bold, to act with urgency, to drive innovation, and to lead without fear. She said, "We do not lead because it's easy. We lead because it is necessary. Leadership is not about titles, but about the impact that we leave behind. When we lead boldly, others follow. We lead with courage, and we need to be the leaders our students, community, and democracy deserves." And that message really resonated with me deeply, especially as we're out there celebrating PBIS and the Apple Awards, because these awards reflect not only strong systems, but the strong leadership that we have throughout our district, every single one of you that is in here today. And so, you know, from cabinet to principals, as I mentioned, everyone who supports our students each and every day. But also, we heard from one of the keynote speakers on civic engagement, Mr. Matt Meriden. He spoke about courage. He said that while there are many forms of courage, one of the most profound is the courage to listen, especially to someone you might disagree with. The courage to say, "Tell me more. Help me understand where you're coming from," rather than dismissing them or preparing a rebuttal. And that type of courage takes humility, patience, and a very big heart. My hope is that we all practice courage, that type of courage, if we don't already do. We may not agree on every decision or policy, and like a few people on our board have already said today, that's okay. It's okay to not agree. But if we approach each other with the willingness to listen, to understand different perspectives, and to assume good intentions, we will make stronger and more thoughtful decisions for our students and our community. And, you know, that is very important for, I believe, every single one of us here in the dais and, you know, in our cabinet and in our district, and every single one of you that is here today, because you care and you're willing to listen. Again, we may not agree, and that is okay. It's okay. Again, I want to thank you all and congratulations to all of our schools. And in case I do not see you before the end of the year, I want to say wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. But hopefully I will see you all before. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. James, would you like to share any reports?
Sure, thank you. So just for transparency, I am participating remotely because I am on military leave. So thank you, Nate and Jeremy, for setting me up for my remote participation. And I appreciate the cooperation from the board in moving another date around, so I don't have to do this again, hopefully, in the next upcoming year. Similarly, in the vein of thankfulness, I had an opportunity to meet with our new interim principal, Jenna Bright. I'm excited for her leadership in the upcoming year, but also do want to thank Robin Munshao for her service before she moved on to the County Department of Education. I was also able to go to the stage production of Annie at Fister. And so it was an amazing production, and I'm constantly amazed by the creativity of our kids. And so thank you to the parent and staff that put on that great production. And tonight, I'm looking forward to voting to increase the support for the stage program. Finally, one of the last things I did before getting on military duty was to go to Sunset Lanes Breakfast with Santa. And the reason I'm calling this out is because, well, I saw teachers there, I saw parents helping out, fellow trustee Estrella was there. For me, that wasn't a, it was a perfect example of how so much of what makes our school special is not explicit. In other words, unspoken heroes, right? Like, to the parents that are listening and they're out there that are involved with PTSAs or foundations or even less formally in other capacities, there is so much goodness that you do that no one will ever recognize. So much sweat and money, personal money from the teachers' pockets, from your pockets, that you're putting in to making sure that kids are smiling and healthy and learning. And so just thank you. And so that's what I'm thinking about this holiday season.
Thank you, James. I appreciate that. So I will conclude with our reports. I also got to attend the CSBA annual conference and enjoyed my time with not only our other colleagues, but our trustees and our cabinet. It was a great learning experience. But I'll focus on, I did get to attend the president's training, anticipating that I would be serving in this role this year. It helped me prepare for this role and especially to try to create smooth procedures in operating and facilitating meetings. So I'm really excited and looking forward to serving as president this year. And I've also decided that I would like to run again for a second term coming in 2026, because I really do love this district and I love this work. And I want to remain a steady presence as we are looking at transition, especially in this time of change and choosing a new superintendent over the next year. I am, remain extremely encouraged and proud of the work that we've done over the last three years that I've been on the board and really hopeful about what we will continue to do and as I get to serve as your president. I'm looking forward to building on the progress, especially in increasing our child protection, our safety on campus and online through awareness and prevention through youth empowerment, focusing on helping our children succeed at every level, reaching grade level and their highest potential, including addressing the whole child and the families, as we talked about, just a holistic response to the way that we care for our kids and ensuring that our teachers and staff have the support that they need to do their best every single day. So as we think about this year, I'm as focused as president on how we support especially our special education, including our students, both in with IEPs as well as our GATE students. We will continue to work on some of the challenging behaviors that we know are make, sometimes make learning and teaching difficult, but also are really ultimately prohibiting our students from being their best every single day. We will continue to make art and technology and culturally responsive teaching a hallmark of FSD education and continue to listen to our community, our kids, our parents, our teachers and staff, and our whole Fullerton citizens in order to pick the very best superintendent possible to replace our dear Dr. Bob, to find the right pit, the right fit and the perfect leader that will build on our strengths and maximize all the good things that we're doing here. So as I think about, simplest way to think about my three S's as I focus as president... So, as I think about, simplest way to think about my three S's as I focus as president, our student achievement, safety and holistic well-being, and superintendent, and I'm excited to serve as your president as I focus on those things. We are done with our trustee reports. We will hear from our associations. I will start with our Teachers Association, FETA. Darlene? Okay, sorry, I will, going in the order it's written. I know it's different than maybe it has been in the past. New president, new order.
Good evening, President, oh, not President Berryman anymore, but thank you, and I'm glad you're still going to be here for a long time. Good evening, President Hanchett. Board members, Dr. Pletka, Cabinet, FETA members and guests. As the holiday break approaches, FETA hopes everyone takes time to rest and enjoy time with family and friends. We continue to be thrilled with the progress of our school sites this year. My favorite things to see alongside our incredible staff in action are the new playgrounds. Thank you, Fullerton community, for passing the bond, and thank you, Dr. Coglan, Scott, Eddie, Mike, and all of your teams for those amazing structures. With the upcoming search for a new superintendent, next year will be a time of change for our district. Dr. Pletka, thank you for your dedicated service to FSD over the past eight years. A new superintendent will undoubtedly bring new goals and programs. Just as staff must reflect and reorganize when changing roles, our district can also use this opportunity for review. FETA respectfully asks the board and the cabinet to use this transition to evaluate our current array of programs, duties, and events, including after-school activities, forums, showcases, academies, bootcamps, interventions, and specialized labs. We encourage you to determine which initiatives continue to benefit our students, families, and district the most, and which ones may have served their purpose and are ready to be retired. By prioritizing our resources, we can better focus on the most pressing current needs of our students and staff, such as support for trauma, homelessness, behavior interventions, social emotional health, and food insecurities. Change can be difficult, but it can also be good. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Darlene. We, I'll call up CSCA if we have a representative from CSCA. Great.
Good evening, President Hanchett. Trustees, Dr. Pletka and Executive Cabinet, I'm Sheri Williamson for CSCA. CSCA would like to extend our gratitude to trustee Berryman for your service and leadership. The classified members thank you and look forward to working closely with the updated board and its new leadership. Tonight, CSCA would like to report that we have identified two FSD families who we will be supporting again with donations and gifts for the holidays. And I'll make this short and sweet, we would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday season and all the best for 2026.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheri. Do we have someone with a report from FESMA? No report today? Okay. Happy holidays. What about D-Lux? Do we have a representative?
We do not have a report from D-Lux.
No report today? Okay. Our SEPA, our special education?
No report from SEPA.
Nope? Okay. PTA, I saw our rep. Here she is, Joanne.
Make sure I did this right. Good, good evening, Dr. Pletka and President Hanchett, members of the board. My name is Joanne Cho, and I have the pleasure of serving as the president of Fullerton Council of PTAs. Very soon, we'll be heading into our winter holiday break. We at Fullerton Council of PTAs, along with our individual units, are very busy with our programs for holiday celebrations and giving opportunities. We hope many of our FSD staff have enjoyed the holiday meals and treats and celebrations provided by our PTAs as a way to say thank you for all you do for our students. We at Fullerton Council of PTAs want to let our FSD school board know that we are truly grateful for each and every one of you and your tireless efforts to support our students and their education and activities. Even though we are currently in December, please know that our unit membership campaigns are still going strong at each of our school sites. As of today, we have a total of around 4,630 members. Woo, woo, okay. We continue to encourage all of our teachers, district and unit staff, and admin that joins your local units or multiple units. Every membership makes a difference and allows us to partner with our schools and put on programs and family engagement opportunities. Remember, nothing says happy holidays like a PTA membership. Okay. So, talking about PTA members, we actually have Sacramento Safari. It's our fourth district, Orange County PTA, annual two-day advocacy trip to our state Capitol. PTA members get to hear from key speakers on issues that affect children, youth, and families, learn about inner workings of the state government, and advocate directly to our legislators. And network, and they also get to network with other PTA advocates. This is a highly informative and inspiring two days of PTA advocacy at work. It's actually on February 23rd and 24th, our registration is open for PTA members. So, something that's happening this week and last week is our individual PTA units have been working hard to support our Local Pathways of Hope program. I think you've seen it at all the schools. This will be our 40th year providing toys and food to the FSD families who may need a little extra help in the holidays. The units have been gathering food, toys, and gifts to donate to our local collection center, the hub. For those of you who have high school siblings, I do want to remind everyone that our high school seniors should join their local PTSA by December 31st. Why? Because this will allow them to be eligible for our council PTA scholarship and reward our April luncheon. As a reminder, our council meetings are held on Fullerton Joint Union High School District Boardroom on the fourth Tuesday of every month at 9:00, 3:00 AM. Our next meeting is actually next year, January 20th, 2026. And remember, you can find all our meeting dates on our website at fullertoncouncilpti.org. Feel free to reach out to us at any time at fullertoncouncilptiinfo@gmail.com, and we are always happy to hear from you. Hope to see you all in 2026. That concludes our report.
All right. Thank you. So, trustees, the next section is public comment. At this point, I don't believe we have any public comments. I will read our announcement. They are related only, any general public comments. So, just checking in, I think we'll go through that section, and then if you need a personal break, I will ask in just a moment, okay? So, I, as far as I know at this moment, we don't have any general public comments. I have over nine that are related to agenda items specifically that we will address when we get there, but I will read our rules of decorum for public comment, which we normally read at this point in the meeting agenda, and then when it's your turn to speak on agenda item, you can remember our rules. So, I will read this out loud. The board meeting follows rules of decorum per board by law 9323. Individual speakers may be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The total of time allowed for public comment shall be 30 minutes. Public comments about an item that is on the agenda will be heard at the time of the agenda item is considered by the board. Public comments about an item that is not on the posted agenda will be held, heard at the beginning of the open session, then called upon by the board president. No action or discussion may take place on any item that is not on the posted agenda except as expressly authorized by law. Since the board cannot take action on items that are not on the agenda, such items will be referred to the superintendent for handling. Board members may request that any item be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. The board president and the superintendent will determine the best time to place an item on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board are invited to complete a submit or, and submit a request to speak slip to the executive assistant. These slips are available at the entrance of the room under the large yellow sign. So, if you all have had a chance, hopefully, to complete these slips, if you wish to continue to make them, you can do that, but at this point, Anne and I will double check, we do not have any public comments that are related to non-agenda items, I believe. Okay. So, I, as I said, I have about nine that are related to generally our after-school program discussion, whether that's about the junior high expansion or access to spaces after-school hours. So, I will reserve those and we will call on those when we get to that discussion item. So, the next item for us to discuss is we need to approve our minutes from both our October 29th special board meeting, where we selected our trustee, and our November 18th regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those meetings, minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 29th and November 18th, 2025.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. No further discussion, then we will vote. We're doing real call again, it takes a little bit longer, so trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Trustee Vanessa Azdrea?
Aye.
Aye.
James Cho?
Aye.
Okay. An aye from Ruthie Hanchett. Great. Minutes are approved. We will move on to Section 10, which is addressing our agenda and approval of our agenda. So, prior to voting on this, I would like to suggest that we move items from discussion action items A and B, which both have to do with our decision-making about after-school programming, A being the expansion to the junior highs and B, is that right? No, excuse me, being the access to school campuses after-school hours, and B being the extension to junior highs for free after-school care. I would like to move those from the discussion action items up to the, directly after the presentation, so that we can hear the discussion from our staff, hear from the public comments, and then have a discussion and vote on those items immediately after. Does that sound good? Okay. Then I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments regarding items A and B.
So, moved?
Okay.
Second?
Great, second. Okay, then we'll vote. James Cho, do you approve of the agenda with the amendments?
Aye.
Berryman?
Aye.
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 An aye for myself.
Okay. So, next we have the presentation, and then we will have discussion and voting on the public comment, discussion and voting. How's my board feeling? Do we need a minute to take a break, or are we okay?
We're okay.
Good. We'll go? Okay, then I think that we will call up our staff who are making their way. Jason Chong, and we'll hear an update on our after-school prep.
Good evening, President Hanchett, trustees, cabinet, and community members. Tonight, I am pleased to provide an update on the Encore Expanded Learning Program and the expansion required for January 2026. This update outlines the program's growth, our staffing needs, community access options, and recommendations requiring board direction. I'd also like to thank our Encore staff for their hard work and hard work for Students Beyond the Bell, the many of them here today. Next slide. As a reminder, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, or ELOP, was expanded by the state and districts with an unduplicated pupil population, a percentage above 55% are now required to offer services to all students who request them by the 2026, '27 school year. Fullerton School District exceeds that threshold, which means we must continue to scale our Encore program accordingly. All of our Encore programs follow consistent quality standards, guidelines, and attendance expectations across every site. This helps ensure that no matter where students participate, they receive a strong, safe, and high-quality experience. Before 2022, our after-school landscape was made up of individual programs, the LAB, Encore, and ACIS. In 2022, we brought these together into one unified, comprehensive, expanded learning program. The consolidation has helped streamline staffing, communication, standards, and student access. The LAB is now held to the same standards and compliance measures as ACIS. Encore now extends well beyond routine after-school supervision. We offer a robust sports league, including football, basketball, and soccer. Our Encore Conservatory continues to grow through the K-Pop Academy. We've also extended family engagement nights, field trip opportunities, and a full Encore summer camp. These offerings help us ensure that expanded learning is enriching, engaging, and connected to student interests. As you can see from this chart, our enrollment has grown significantly year over year. In 2018, '19, we served about 1,533 students. In 2022, '23, we were at 1,205. 2023, '24 increased to 1,680, and this year, we are serving 2,186. With the January 2026 expansion, we project enrollment to reach approximately 3,303 students. That's an unprecedented level of demand and reflects both the need in our community and the trust families put in our program. This slide shows enrollment broken out by site. You can see that several campuses such as Laguna Road, Sunset Lane, Pacific Drive, Raymond and Rich Beachwood are expecting more than 230 students each. As you can see, some of the expected enrollment are large as, if not larger than, some of our existing school sites enrollment numbers. So, in essence, we would be running an Encore program comparable to a full-day elementary site. These numbers help us plan staffing allocations and determine partner organization replacements. Growth in student enrollment naturally requires growth in staffing. In 2018, '19, we had 90 staff members. Today, in 2024, '25, we have 162. With the projected January expansion, we anticipate needing approximately 320 total staff members across the district. This represents one of the most significant staffing increases in the department's history. This growth also can be attributed to the increasing need for support staff in the areas of special education, behavioral supports, and medical staff. This table shows the staffing distribution needed across each site, both FSD staff and partner staff. Some campuses like Pacific Drive, Sunset Lane, Laguna Road, and Raymond require larger teams due to higher student enrollment and need. These breakdowns guide our hiring, training, and implementation planning. To meet program needs and provide high-quality enrichment, we partner with several community-based organizations. These include Boys and Girls Club of Fullerton, Higher Ground, OC United, Middle Tree, AES, Hokali, OC Kids Connect, Strategic Kids, Apollo, and BAM. Each partner serves specific school sites based on program needs and areas of expertise. This supports the need for increased safety measures across our campuses and the need to maintain our staffing ratios. This also amplifies the need for a strong facilities use process and agreement with vendors due to multiple spaces being occupied at FSD sites. At this time, we'd like to share a brief video highlighting the Encore experience at Pacific Drive. This gives you a sense of the day-to-day activities, the student engagement, and the enrichment opportunities that our expanded learning vision makes possible.
A day in Encore is all about students, meeting their needs, extending their learning, and giving them a safe, enriching place to belong. Our work starts early. As a team, we prepare learning spaces, organize materials, and review schedules, so everything is ready the moment students arrive. We coordinate with the front office, teachers, and families to make sure we understand what each student needs academically, socially, and emotionally before the after-school day even begins. When Encore starts, the campus comes alive. Students move into homework support and targeted academic help, small group interventions, and enrichment classes that go beyond the school day, STEM, and robotics, arts, music, sports, leadership, language development, and more. Every activity is designed to be engaging, rigorous, and connected to real skills students can use. We focus on building relationships, encouraging positive behavior, and creating spaces where students feel seen, valued, and successful.
Some of my favorite things are like all the art style, come, come to get, come here and you get to do like a bunch of art, Lego. I also love doing all the sports and activities. They come like, like last season, we did folk, it's like the song, "And the stars." I love that I get to like finish my homework before I get home, so now I'm not like distracted.
As the day winds down, we carefully manage dismissal so students go home safely and families feel informed and supported.
For us, it's, it's, it's our purpose, it's our passion, and I think that's why a lot of parents enjoy our Fullerton School District programs, not just after-school programs, but our extracurricular activities that we have all across campus.
Encore is a true team effort. Classified staff, site leaders, teachers, and partners all working together. We are proud that our program doesn't just watch students after school. It challenges them, supports them, and opens doors. Encore exists to meet and exceed the needs of our students and families every single day.
A little shout out to Mr. Castillo, a great actor, yeah. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Hammond to talk about the next item.
So, next we want to talk a little bit about public asset, access versus non-public areas. One of the things we have enjoyed here in Fullerton is being able to have our schools open to our community and to our public when school is not in session. Well, our programs have grown, and our programs are growing larger, and when that happens, we have to do what we can to make sure that while our schools are public schools from the standpoint they were paid for with public tax dollars, there are times that public areas need to be restricted because we want to make sure we ensure safety. And some good examples would be military bases, which are paid for with public tax dollars, but are often restricted to ensure the safety of our troops and our military who serve on those bases, or airports. I remember a day when you could walk right into the airport, walk right up to the gate, and have a meal in any of the restaurants, but now there are restrictions in place in airports as well in order to maintain safety that require safety that require you to have a ticket and to have appropriate ID to get in. So, one of the things we want to make sure is that we distinguish between what is public access versus non-public access when it comes to after-school and having large numbers of students at our schools. So, public access after-school with no restrictions means that anyone can come on the campus at any time, and that could include immigration enforcement, peoples with, people with erratic behavior or unusual behavior, and even parents who may have custody or restraining orders. If there is open public access after-school, photos can be taken of students or by visitors, and anyone can be on campus. Visitors cannot be ordered to leave, and there are additional costs that have to be put in place to maintain and keep our campuses safe. When we limit public access because of the number of students and because wanting to maintain safety, campus visitors who are allowed can be controlled and monitored, have be checked into the office, go through our Raptor systems. Photos and videos are not allowed by visitors on campus. Visitors also can be asked to leave, and when we maintain that, it also maintains our costs on our campus, especially when we're large, running our large-scale programs. Prior to making this presentation tonight, we worked to put together some proposals, which we're presenting to you, on how we are, how we could allow public access during program hours. So, we put together an input committee of interested individuals on that topic regarding, here are some proposals that we have regarding our programs. So, this included our, the, the members of the committee were put together by our site supervisors and our lead principals with various sites, and they were community members who were there to provide input regarding our Encore programs and also what we were looking at doing as far as our proposals. The district presented three initial proposals as far as public access, and then the committee also came up with a fourth option or a fourth alternative that we'll be presenting to the board tonight.
Next, I'll be presenting those options. Option A maintains full campus closure until 6:00 PM when Encore programs end. This allows for community access through Facilitron reservations. There is no additional cost to the district, and this model prioritizes student safety and program consistency. Option B opens a campus for one hour after-school dismissal. Families gather in a designated supervised area separate from Encore students and must leave after the hour. Estimated cost for this option is between $60,000 and $75,000 annually based on those staffing needs for the supervision. Option C allows but requires, allows access but requires significant safety measures: fingerprinting for all adults, Raptor check-ins, rotational use of limited space, additional safety monitors, portable restrooms, and supplies for managing restricted areas. The total cost ranges from $665,000 to $790,000 a year. And last, Option D is the option proposed by the committee. It keeps campuses closed to all visitors until Encore ends at 6:00 PM with no additional costs. This option is the simplest to implement and maintains consistent safety protocols district-wide.
And our final third topic was for free junior high programs for Parks, Beachwood, and Fissler. For Parks Junior High, we have costed out a free after-school model currently serving 32 students. Costs include a site supervisor, lead assist, instructional assistant, aid support, and ongoing supplies totaling $174,000 annually. However, this figure is based on initial enrollment that was expected at the start of the fiscal year. For the programs at Beachwood and Fissler, expanding free Encore access to Beachwood and Fissler for 7th and 8th graders would require an investment of $52,000 in startup costs per site and then $37,000 ongoing per 20 students. So, the total combined ongoing cost for free junior high programming at Parks, Beachwood, and Fissler is approximately $248,000 annually at the current numbers proposed. So, tonight, we are requesting board directions on two items. First, your decision on community access to campuses during Encore hours that includes Options A through D. Second, direction on expanding free Encore programs at Parks, Beachwood, and Fissler. Your input will shape our implementation timeline and resources allocations for January, January and beyond. And thank you, and I'd like, I'm happy to answer any questions.
At this time, I would like our questions from the staff, or trustees, excuse me, for clarification at this point, and then after that, we'll have public comments. Okay, so if we have questions for our staff to clarify what they presented to us or to better understand this topic.
I just have a question around the community needs assessment for the numbers that you all arrived to for Parks Junior High and Beachwood and Fissler. How much did that go into the enrollment management portion of this calculation?
So, at Parks?
At Parks and Beachwood. How did we arrive at those numbers and how, how did we look at local community need for that area?
Yeah, so for Beachwood and Fissler, we'll know more accurately once we get direction. So, the cost that's proposed is for every 20 students. So, once we put out an interest again, then we'll know what that cost really will look like, because we could put it out now, but there's no hard commitment until we actually have it in place. So, once we get ready and put it out there, Beachwood and Fissler will be more clear. We just know that every 20 students per site, it will be a 37 ongoing cost because of the staff member to take care of them. For Parks, we already have right now 32 students. We had already, or started the year at about 40 or a little over 40, and through time and needs or not having the need, it is at now 32. So, that's where we base it off of in terms of what we have now. So, that cost proposed today is the basic, or the basis, which is an instructional assistant, a lead supervisor, and one aide. And so, per more 20 students, so 41 to 51, 61 students would be every aide 37,000 ongoing.
Right. I have a question that just dawned on me. Going back just to the, the details of the program itself, so for Encore Extended Day, if we have people, if we have students that sign up for it, is there attendance for this? I'm, you know, I look at something like this and I figure, okay, you know, when you offer free things to people, sometimes there's that commitment, ah, well, you know, we don't really need to go today. Is there any kind of agreement with our families on, you know, just how important it is to be there because we do have expenses that we have allotted for?
Thank you, yes. So, prior to 2022, Lab didn't have those requirements. It was more suggested or it's a fee-based. So, after 2022, all our programs now do have attendance policy that they agree with and parents sign on when they do registration. So, it is five days a week, a minimum hour every day that they expectation and the compliant requirement is to be there and to be there at least for an hour per day. So, based on those rules, again, we can't dictate how many students will leave at one hour or beyond, but the understanding is, is supposed to be a three or full three-hour plus five-days-a-week program. And so, that is well aware when people register, and most that register want that full commitment, and it's part of our compliance.
So, they know the importance of being there.
Yes.
Have students been dropped for just not showing up the five days a week?
So, we started that in 2023 more enforcing, so there are cases where we would definitely be monitoring, but our numbers don't show many that stop showing up or don't show up or...
Usually, the parents will make a decision.
Yes.
Quit completely or continue remaining five days a week. Okay.
I, I don't have a question, but just wanted to let you all know only because my daughters attend the after-school program. And so, whenever you, your child is not going to go for X, Y, Z reason, we are required to call and let the staff know why our child is not, so that they don't get marked as this child has dropped out of the program or whatever the reason is. And when we do check them out of the Encore program, if it's before the three-hour margin, we do have, we are expected to say maybe they have after-school activities or, you know, they have a doctor's appointment, or there are requirements that, it is a contract, as, as Jason said, it is a contract that parents, you know, sign when they sign them up at the, in the school. But also, the students sign that contract as well. So, it's not just the parents, I mean, at least in the junior high. You know, my daughter had to sign the contract as well.
I, okay. I was gonna say, we did have lots of questions, and I appreciate all of you guys answering those questions.
Yeah, we sent email and received responses ahead of time as well. One of the questions I had is, Jason, I know you can't, you can't predict the future, but right now, you said we started around 40 students at Parks, it went down to 32 at this point. That's where everyone's paying except for two students that have scholarships because of economic need. My guess that is that like Laguna Road or Sunset Lane, when it's suddenly offered for free, we saw those numbers double. If you had to guess at this junior high, if we were to offer it for free, would you expect not the $174,000 a year, but maybe even double that? Or at least, I was calculating, that'd be more like $245,000 because I know there's only one person who's in charge, but then the additional aides if we were to double the number of students.
My cue ball.
Yeah.
Says, most likely, I believe there would be a probably an increase. Usually, when you offer something that people don't realize was available, could increase our numbers, which definitely could increase costs. So, today, as we costed out, it's at least four what we have established that we know of. So, moving forward, if we'll get those numbers based on your direction, then that will give us guidance to know how much more each year it will add. And at the current moment, we do not have any grants support in the junior high level in terms at Parks, but we would have to see the interest and know.
Yeah. So, my math with, with one site lead but doubling the instructional assistants and aides was almost quarter million dollars, $245,000 for a year at, at Parks. Another question I have is of the different options that we have, I know we, Dr. Hammett shared the difference between what we would consider a public or a non-public space, right? And some of those are really important tools that we want to have at our disposal to keep our children safe and our staff well, well-prepared to do their job. Of the options that you gave us, specifically Option B, where the parents would meet for an hour afterwards with some supervision by a playground aide, would that still be considered a non-public access because we are monitoring the space and we have, would we still have the ability to remove individuals? Should they not be good visitors? And to refuse immigration enforcement on our campuses?
We would, because it would still be considered a non-public space. It would be parents who were, were particular parents of interest who, who have students there who should be able to attend, and the area would be restricted and monitored as well. So, the key in Option B is to make sure the area that we have allows our students who are in Encore to still fully participate in our Encore programming. And usually, at that time, they're taking attendance, they're having their snack, they're getting their day started, but we would also have a separate area monitored by staff where parents with their students would be able to stay for up to an hour at the end of school. So, it would, it would still be public from the standpoint that our public being the parents who are associated with our school and their children could come, but it would be a restricted public access area.
Okay. Would you consider Option C, which is still safety measures, but checking in, rapturing, and full use of the campus, to be considered a public space at that point, like any city park? Or do you think it's...
That's, it, that one would be a little more, a little more difficult.
Kind of a gray area.
It's a little more of a gray area, just to be honest. And we, one of the things that we would do is we would also have an area of the playground that would be specifically up, that wasn't being used by either someone on from Facilitron, like one of our community partners or Encore programs. So, we've called it kind of the blue cone zone, which is an area we would set up with blue cones. We would also have a portable restroom out there so that the parents weren't utilizing the same restrooms as our students. And then that area would be, be the area where our parents could utilize that day based on what was happening during programming.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. James, do you have any questions you'd like to ask of our staff?
Yes, please. So, one clarifying question for the access to the sites. For Option D, remind me, that is, or just to confirm for me, that is the committee's recommendation?
The committee's recommendation, they, they were, there were some different, different opinions from the committee. The committee did come up with another option, which was Option D. So, there was, one of the options the committee did not like at all was Option C, definitely, but there were some mixed views on Option A versus B versus D.
So, it was another suggestion, but not necessarily the dominant suggestion?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
For, so, okay, so I thought I heard Option D as in Delta was the recommendation, but it's not the official recommendation of the committee?
Correct, and we didn't take a vote of the committee. We really just got, we're, we're working more to get input from the committee on each of the options, so there wasn't an official vote. However, Option D, when, as in Delta, was not presented. That was an option that was come up, that came out of that meeting.
So, Option Delta, to close it until 6:00 PM, would that also bar PTSA?
The PTSA and other groups, that would bar those because of the need to, having no one on campus but the folks in the Encore program, the students, the students in the Encore program and staff.
Okay, so unless you're a teacher, staff, or a student in the Encore program, you're not allowed on campus, so PTSA wouldn't be allowed, and then also, students that were not in the Encore program also wouldn't be allowed.
That's correct. However, the board could, could make modifications to any of those options they chose.
Okay, then I have some clarifying questions for the ELOP expansion. So, first question, can you confirm that Beachwood and Fissler currently have no program?
Yes, there are no programs at Beachwood or Fissler at the moment.
Wait, for...
Is that because there's literally...
For 7th and 8th grade.
High, yes.
Or junior high, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, for 7th and 8th grade at, at Fissler and Beachwood, no program. Is that because there's literally zero interested parents or because there wasn't enough interested parents?
A little bit of both. So, there have not been requests from parents or inquiries, as well as when we do, hear from our supervisors or our principal or whoever, there has not been an inquiry enough to start a program. Again, with guidance, we will definitely find out what that could look like and then go from there, but at the moment, we have not heard or had many inquiries about it.
So, Parks is the only after-school program in the district where you have to pay?
At the moment, Parks is the...
Under 17.
Program, yes.
Okay. And you started with 40, and you now have 32, so that's a 20% drop in enrollment, even though for all the other expansion sites, you're seeing almost double?
Yes, and from little data collecting, you can't find out all the reasons why, but it varies from they don't need it anymore because they have extracurricular activities, or some may say they just don't want to pay anymore. It's a hodgepodge of mixture of responses. At junior high, you know, two years is a different time in life, and so, there are multiple reasons why. We don't ask usually, but that's some feedback we've gotten.
And, and the junior high population's a little bit different, right? In that, based off of your experience, would, do you expect as much of an increase at the junior high level as TK through 8? I imagine more parents of children TK through 8 need the help, but once you get to junior high, you might not need some help when, or you have like more after-school options?
Yeah, I would agree. Like Beachwood and Fissler are more of a TK 8. They do have a smaller 7th, 8th grade population, like usually around 200 or less or so, and more Parks is only 7th, 8th with about 800, 900 students. So, there is a varying need. And so, yeah, for Parks, it's going to be hard to dictate whether it be the same as like Laguna Road or Sunset Lane, but the two-year thing does make a big deal. Like a lot of times, by that age group, they're kind of, have a lot of options sometimes.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from our board? No? Okay. Then I think what I will do is ask for public comments on this topic as we are going to be moving into then discussion and voting after that on these two issues. I mean, we've heard the presentation, and then we will take them separately about whether to allow access after school hours and then expanding to the junior high. So, I have nine public comments that are kind of a mix of both, so if it's okay with folks, I'll call them together. And the, and you will have three minutes to address the board from the podium. So, the first is going to be Erin Hazelton, after Erin will be Mike Cooper.
Good evening, board members and members of the community. My name is Erin Hazelton. I'm a former Parks and Recreation Commissioner, neighborhood resident, and longtime Golden Hill volunteer and parent, and I respectfully ask that you consider maintaining community access to Golden Hill Elementary School outside of school hours. The Golden Hill neighborhood has no reasonable alternative park space. The closest and safest place for our kids to play is at the school's playground, fields, and basketball courts, a true community resource. Our family has utilized the playground since before my children were school age, coming after school hours to play as... after school hours to play as toddlers, and then once of age, staying after to connect with fellow families and letting the kids be outside and enjoying physical play. My oldest is now 12 years old, and having that destination to play basketball or meet friends for wiffleball after school is a vital alternative to screen time. The same goes for staying after the bell rings with my third grader, so she can climb on the monkey bars and sleep with her friends. These scenarios are also applicable into the summer break. If the aftercare program will be utilizing facilities over summer, where does the access go for the surrounding community? I fully understand that safety and campus integrity are the board's highest priorities. It is reasonable to want to protect the site and more importantly, the individual, individuals within. However, a lockout policy has unintended consequences by removing the most effective security measure we have, responsible invested neighbors in the community. Jane Jacobs' foundational urban planning text, The Death and Life of Great American Cities, highlights the need for eyes on the street as the most effective deterrent to crime, not isolation. When families are present playing, we provide the eyes on the street. We act as stewards of the space. Isolating the campus behind locked gates can actually increase the risk of vandalism or illicit activity by creating a deserted zone. Safety should always be paramount, and I understand in caregiving settings, it should be the program's highest priority. However, restricting the use of a public school's play space out of fear to the entire community it serves does not make sense. It can be a shared, safe space. Kids can play after school while after-school care programs can continue to operate, given the ample size of the fields, blacktop, and playgrounds. Our kids need places to play after school. In these scenarios, community connections are made and fortified for the many years that are spent in elementary school. In older kids' cases, they need autonomy to do it as well, and what a safe place to do it. Jonathan Haidt, the author of The Anxious Generation, writes about how actual risk versus perceived risk from crime is microscopic at this point in time compared to the perceived risk. The overprotection driven by these fears has inadvertently caused harm to children's mental health by depriving them of the physical, unstructured social interaction and risk-taking necessary for healthy development and resilience. I'm optimistic that a compromise solution can be reached so that all students benefit from this park-and-play access. I respectfully ask the board to treat Golden Hill as a distinct case if needed and allow the community to continue acting as partners in the safe use of this school. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Dr. Chad Hammett will be keeping time, which I, you did fine, but I just want to let the next speaker's know that he will give you a signal if you've reached your three minutes. And again, just a reminder that we, as the trustees, will not be responding directly to the commenters, but we will take into account when we have our discussion their input.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, council members, council member Joe, wherever he is. Hello, my name is Mike Cooper, and I'm a parent of two students at Golden Hill Elementary. So the following is really specific to my experience with that school. First off, this policy was enacted abruptly in early October with no conversation with the communities in which it affects. Only after complaints from the parents did you open up dialogue to discuss the matter. I do appreciate you meeting with me, and with some of us, in fact, but I still believe that this policy was pushed through on false pretenses. The school facilities and grounds are a, this is a quote, um, from the Board of Trustees' written policy, "vital community resource which should be used to foster the educational, cultural, recreational, artistic, moral, and civic life of the students and the community." I believe this new policy goes against this. Furthermore, our school is a meeting place for children and families to further togetherness, not only, not, not an exclusionary place to shelter a very specific subset of children from the general public. And to a comment made earlier, I do not equate schools with military bases or airports. Also, I do not equate the general public as an imminent threat. We are constantly inundated with the worst society has to offer by ways of social media and political fear mongering. We are connected more than ever, which makes us more aware of the things in this world that have always been there. The claim that there is now a menace lurking around every corner and that we must insulate everyone is the definition of keeping our children in a bubble. The use of fear to enact policies is only going to lead to bigger walls, higher fences, more exclusion from our community, and the inability for our children to interact and deal with the real world. These restrictions are just going to prohibit our children from developing the skills they need as adults. If there really is such an imminent danger out there, we are only taking away the ability for our children to learn the skills to navigate the real world. We can give our kids the tools to be safe, but we cannot protect them from every bit of harm our minds can imagine. That's just not realistic. Our jobs as parents in schools are to prepare our kids for the real world. Keeping them in a constant bubble is not going to do that. They say that it takes a village to raise children, while that village is being cut down day by day through the years, use of fear-based policies. On a national level, we are currently witnessing how fear mongering is used to justify infringing on people's personal liberties and rights. Building fences and locking people out is not an effective way to build a better community. Building up a community that looks after each other is a far more effective way to secure our kids. We need, and we need a place to do that. Rather than using these purely projected numbers based on a quick survey of interest to enact a broad-stroke policy across the entire district, I urge you to consider revising this policy for individual sites, or at least once real enrollment numbers, staffing, and child pickup patterns start to materialize. Thank you for your time.
Or, thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Eric Wen, and then Manuel Walker.
Good evening, board trustees. Imagine living in a neighborhood where the only safe place for children to play disappeared overnight. I'm Eric Wayne, a former City Parks and Rec Commissioner and current Golden Hill alumnus, parent, and neighborhood resident. Uh, I was at first against the expansion of the free after-school program, not at all because of the program itself, as my two Golden Hill Gators have very much enjoyed Encore programming in the past, but because of the expansion's negative impact on local daycares and churches that can't compete against free. And, uh, more importantly, um, because of the loss of community access to a safe park space. I'm not here tonight to speak against the expansion as that ship has sailed, nor to argue that all campuses should be opened at the close of regular, uh, school hours. In many cases, doing so might be what's best for that community. I am here to advocate for my Golden Hill community and ask that the board make an exception for an exceptional case. Fullerton is essentially built out with almost no remaining open space for new parks. The state's mandate to add 13,000 housing units by 2031 will only intensify this shortcoming. Unlike every other FSD campus, Golden Hill has no city-owned park within practical walking distance for families. The five nearest city-owned parks range from 20 to 35 minutes away and all involve crossing major streets. For my kids and the hundreds of children who live in the Golden Hill area, the Golden Hill campus is their only community park. Two recent serious accidents near Cal State Fullerton, one unfortunately fatal, involving pedestrians, scooters, and vehicles underscores the danger of pushing neighborhood children into traffic when the only safe open space they have is taken away from them, a risk that is far greater than the likelihood of a stranger harming a supervised after-school student on campus. And as a parent of a child with ADHD, not having open space for her to run, bike, and climb around has had a noticeably detrimental effect on my daughter's well-being since Golden Hill campus was closed in September. In addition, for most of the school year, 6:00 PM is after dark, effectively giving zero community access and no place for children to play safely. The fields at Golden Hill stretch out over five acres, offering plenty of space for the community to coexist easily, even with the expected number of after-school kids. I also worry that the information you were presented from the parent input meeting doesn't represent this exceptional case well, as there was only one Golden Hill parent invited to that. More than half of the people present at that meeting were either school district staff or Encore staff. So I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the board to treat Golden Hill as an exceptional case and allow community access at 3:10 PM, because it can be done safely, because it reduces risk to children, and because of its unique role as the neighborhood's only available safe, safe park space. Golden Hill isn't just a school, it's my neighborhood's only park. Please keep it open for our kids.
Thank you, Eric. And so next is Manny, and then Glenn Gixted.
So my name is Manuel. I go by Manny Walker. I'm a Golden Hill parent. I have two kids in the Fullerton Unified, oh, sorry, in the Fullerton School District, one at Parks, one at Golden Hill. And I'm also a member of the Golden Hill Education Foundation, also a, uh, city commissioner, and so really would like to thank the board for their time. I wanted to read into the record an email that my son wrote to this board concerning this policy. This was unprovoked, my son's in fifth grade, and when he heard about this policy, he was upset, and I'll read it to you. He says, "I feel scammed. I feel scammed, not because of one reason, but of many. First of all, why do you have to open the gates at six? Why six? Imagine your house opening up at six. My school never had this policy, and I mean never, because I've been to Golden Hill Elementary for my whole life, and think. And you may think, why is this kid sending us this? Well, maybe this kid is actually trying to tell you something, that the school policy is not just crazy, but wild. I go to school, I'm sorry, I go after school to play football, and now I'll have to wait until six, when the sun is setting, and the coyotes come out. But the coyotes are always out, which isn't better when it's dark. And since it's dark, uh, you do not know what's lurking and what's happening in the dark. You know, I'm just a kid who's trying to tell you something. And if you need to tell me something, don't worry, I'll be at the school, or I'll be playing in the dark." So that's, you know, from the mouth of babes, right? This was unprovoked, but, um, and I'm just, I guess, what I would ask is just that the board here consider not adopting a one-size-fits-all approach. City of Fullerton has very unique neighborhoods and very unique needs, and adopting a one-size-fits-all approach, uh, you know, is not, uh, is not the most optimal solution, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Next, Glenn.
Good evening. I'm a parent at Fissler, and it sounds like every school has some unique challenges and interests. Thank you, Golden Hill parents, for, uh, for speaking up. I've been to Golden Hill, the, um, uh, the summer program for the kids, they do, it's fantastic campus, the kids really enjoyed it, and I can see how that community school is a great facility for your kids, your community. Fissler's a little bit different. You know, we have an HOA community that has a lot of park space in it, and our kids probably have more access to park space than Golden Hill. I want to talk, though, just briefly about the lab. My oldest daughter was at lab for a number of years, had a fantastic experience. We actually had her in there for a number of years for the socialization. And with the fenced-in field, they let the kids kind of like roam a little bit wild for part of the time. There was structured reading time and homework time, to be sure, but the kids were allowed to just kind of run around and socialize and be free. And something's changed this year. Now that they've invited the Fullerton Rangers onto campus, uh, it's no longer a free, open, safe space for the kids. The Facilitron idea, honestly, it doesn't work at, at Fissler at all. Expecting that just because we've signed a contract and they've agreed to use the space, and then therefore all the people that are invited onto campus are somehow going to be good actors or be safe is, it's just not playing out. It's negatively impacting, uh, the Fissler student experience, and the after-school experience at the lab is part of that for a good number of kids, I think at least 100, 150 kids. So, um, I think, uh, I think my point here tonight is to ask you to also consider that at Fissler is another unique case, but then how many schools are going to come up here and have their specific situation? I hope other schools do come up and represent, you know, kind of what's necessary to their school site. It seems like the board should leave this decision in the hands of the principals to decide what's best for their community. Uh, for, for Fissler, um, with the Fissler, the fence around the campus, um, allowing the public into that space while kids are running around our, our kind of communal space is, is not a great idea, because then the amount of staff required to keep an eye on them, with the way our buildings are oriented, would, would be untenable. And as a taxpayer, as a student, you know, I, I don't want the district paying thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for the necessary staff and security to, to keep an eye on that. Our school site does not work well for open public access. Period.
Thank you, Glenn. Next is Donna Kim, and then after that will be Ellen Wen.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and superintendent and guests. I'm here today as a concerned parent from Robert C. Fissler and a committed stakeholder. I have four students, children, at Robert C. Fissler, and I'm focused on one thing, making sure we maintain the safety and well-being of everyone involved in our after-school operations, students, staff, and partners alike. We appreciate the community spirit that wants to use our school facilities. We also want to be realistic. Every school site in our district is different. They have different physical layouts, different neighborhood issues, and critically widely varied growth in their Encore enrollment, as you saw in the previous slides. I am advocating for a policy that respects this reality. We need to empower each school to create a campus access plan that actually works for its unique context. A single one-size-fits-all cookie cutter approach simply won't meet the diverse needs of our district. Our school in particular, at Fissler, is facing one of the district's larger enrollment surges in Encore, nearly doubling the number of students we are entrusted to care for every afternoon. This dramatic increase demands that we adopt the highest possible safety standards. We are not fear mongering. This is the reality of our day to, our social, our society today. I understand that external groups want to use the facilities right after the last bell, but we must clearly distinguish between needs and wants. The need for a safe, supervised environment for hundreds of children in the Encore program is a fundamental, non-negotiable need for our working families. This is a critical extension of our school day. The desire for our working, the desire for outside groups to start their activities immediately is a logistical preference, not a need. We simply cannot compromise the fundamental requirement of student safety to accommodate the preference for earlier access. Our students' protection must come first. Our specific safety concern is operational. We already are stretched to at capacity. Our staff is managing a huge, rapidly growing number of students. Furthermore, due to our specific demographics, we must also have dedicated resource for dual language, specifically Korean-speaking population. This added complexity, especially in a high-stress communication scenario, means our focus must be absolutely singular, the children in our care. If we introduce uncontrolled access from external groups onto the campus simultaneously, we create too many moving parts for our staff to manage safely. We cannot be expected to track supervised students and manage and track, rotate access for non-student users. Our resources are limited, and our focus must be, again, remain singular, the children in our care. This is the principle we must uphold. Encore students deserve the exact same protections they get during the regular school day for the rest of our day students. If the gates are closed from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, they must remain closed from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM to protect them. Safety cannot be a matter of time of day. For our site, the essential protocol is this, we need a policy that allows us to... Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Ellen is next, and then after Ellen will be Duke Choi. And our final speaker is Lizette Nara.
Hi, everybody. Uh, board of trustees, thank you for all your time and effort in, in keeping us running, keeping us, our schools, you know, exemplary. Thank you, Dr. Plucka, as well. My name is Ellen, and I'm representing Fissler. I am actually part of basically every parent group on campus. I'm in part of PTSA, I'm part of the foundation. I have a couple nods in the room because they've seen me at district meetings, I'm part of Champions, I'm part of SSC. And I really, I was on the committee that worked these options the first time around. And I really do also believe, and I'm listening to Golden Hill and their needs, and I'm listening to us and our needs, and I really, really believe that it needs to be school-specific. It really makes a difference because their needs are very different from ours. I think if I had to make a blatant statement, I'm going to err on the side of caution. I'm going to say, "Close everybody down." But they're right. I mean, Golden Hill has their community built in the school, right? Our community is built in the school. I'm also a scout mom. You know, there's rules and regulations behind that, and 80% of our scout troop is based at our school, right? So for the safety of the kids, right, we need to be sure that they're protected, but not in a bubble. And so like the fence, for instance, I believe is giving them a platform to grow, not so much, you know, imprisoning them in. But one of the bigger things that I did want to talk about is, we are one of the schools that will increase to already double our size, which means we are going to be at almost the same size as some of the other elementary schools, which requires more than the two rooms that are allotted currently. There's no way we're going to fit 300 kids in two little portables. There's no way. They're going to have to rotate, they're going to have to move around, they may have to move all over campus. That's not going to be as possible with other entities on campus. Even with me, I actually do know a lot of the parents, and when I see somebody I don't know, I'm kind of like, why are they here? Who's their kid? What are they doing on campus? And it's much better to feel like you know- And it's much better to feel like you know the community, you know who's watching your kids, you can place the person, rather than having, you know, random strangers on campus. I've had a teacher actually observe an outside entity didn't want to walk all over the porta-potty, and our restrooms were closed because they're closed for the lab until they need it. So they decided to urinate on the wall was a better example, or a better idea, right? One of my teachers, one of the teachers said that, like, she literally observed that. Do you really want your campus to be open to these things? You know, I certainly don't. There's pride in my campus, there's pride in our community. And so this is something that I think makes sense for Fissler, right? We want to shut down our gates and keep it closed until six. Again, I am part of a lot of parent groups where we hold after-school programs, but that works well for us. We have Math Olympiad, Science Olympiad, we have speech and debate, right? And so we can't close down to everybody, but those are still our kids who are in those programs. They know where to go after school, and their gates are closed until then. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. So next is Duke, and then our final comment is Lizette. Do we have Duke still? Duke Choi? Okay. If he shows up, we will hear from him last, but Lizette Nara is then our next speaker. Nava, excuse me, I misread the R.
You're okay. The R. Good evening. My name is Lizette Nava, and I am a parent at Pacific Drive. My daughter has been a part of the ACIS Now Encore After-School Program since kindergarten and is now in sixth grade, and as a single parent who works late evenings, the after-school program has given me peace of mind by providing safety, supervision, and consistency for my daughter. I'm here tonight respectfully to request that the board consider only allowing campus access to the public after 6:00 p.m., when the after-school program ends, rather than before. For many parents like me, the school day does not end at dismissal, it ends at 6:00 p.m. Allowing community access before 6:00 p.m. raises real safety concerns. Our current climate around the country has a rise of immigration stress, homelessness that impacts certain areas, active shooter threats, and more. When adults who are not identifiable or authorized are on campus during after-school hours, it limits the spaces for our students and the school staff to utilize, and it creates additional work for the after-school program team who already supervise large groups. They would now also have to monitor incoming traffic, shared use of fields, playgrounds, and restroom, increasing the risk of intermingling between students and adults who are not a part of the program. And at many school, spaces are already limited. With the expect, with, excuse me, with the expected expansion of the Encore program, the number of students on campus will now grow even more, Pacific Drive being one of them. That makes it critical to protect the safety and structure that these programs provide. Increased foot traffic during programming hours compromises that safety. Allowing access after 6:00 p.m. reduces these risks, it avoids disruptions, prevents unnecessary restrictions on students, and maintains a secure environment where children can learn, play, and participate in activities without concern. I want to be clear, I am not against community access to school campus. I just simply believe that for the safety of students, that must come first. Our children deserve to be in a protected space where their routines, programs, and well-being are being prioritized. I respectfully ask the board to consider this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizette. Okay. Did we, is Duke here? Any last call for Duke? Okay. Then what I'm going to suggest to my board is that we take a very quick recess of about three to five minutes. Let's see. Let's definitely be back at 8:30 in our seats. Anyone who is interested in hearing the debate and discussion, please stay, but let's just give ourselves a five-minute break. Debate skills over here. All right, am I getting amplification at this point? There we go. All right, folks, we're going to return to our seats as we now are going to move into motions and discussion on these topics. We've had public comment, and then what I'm going to look for is proposals of motions from our trustees in order to open up the discussion. So we need to put a motion on the table in order to begin this conversation. So we will start with the topic of the community access to school campuses during after-school programs. So we've been presented with options A, B, C, or D. We can consider one of those, making a motion for one of those four, or we can also propose an amendment or an alternative motion. We have options. So I look to someone to put an option, a motion on the table, and then we can discuss. And if no one's prepared, I can do it.
I can, I can make a motion.
Okay.
At least what I feel. I, you know, and we'll discuss it after I make our motion.
Absolutely.
So I am going to make a motion that we approve option D, but with some modifications. I'm looking at school groups as being part of our school community, so PTAs, foundations, clubs that are on, on campus. So if we can make that modification with D would be my motion.
Okay. So D with modifications to include school groups, which as someone who served on the committee that developed our policy on school facilities use in Facilitron, this basically would be, they'd have to be an FSD-associated group. I think the question would be whether Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, things like that, as long as the majority of the students were of that school, maybe, we could kind of, we might have to, we might have to bring some clarity to that policy and to outline exactly what we mean by that. But the motion is to adopt D with those modifications to prioritize school groups, but no outside use through Facilitron. Do I have a second for that option?
I'm speaking. This is, this is horny. So, yeah, the school groups thing, because one thing for sure is, I think option D, I heard it from staff saying that option D would exclude PTSA as it stands right now. So without trustee Baereman's modification, option D would exclude PTSA's and foundations.
Yeah, without the modification, which trustee Baereman has now proposed.
And school groups would be defined how?
What I would see it as is a group that has a facility use form with the, with the school, because I think what, or I don't think that's, I don't know if it's facility uses anymore, but, you know, if I'm a Cub Scout, if I'm a Girl Scout leader, Boy Scout, Scouts, chess club, where, as you were saying, the majority of the students are students that are at that school, and that program is being set up for that, that school. So chess club, speech and debate, all those things that we still do after a school day that keeps students on campus and keep adults there, because what I'm assuming is that those adults would be cleared to be able to be there. So I think, you know, we could talk about a clearance. If I'm a Girl Scout leader, then I, you know, I have clearance, and I should have clearance. But something where the schools are affiliated, PTAs, foundations, because they do work of that school on their school grounds. I, you know, if we're talking, and I'm not sure if we're talking on, on it yet, so. That's, that's how I would clarify that.
Let's, so that's the proposed motion. If I don't have a second, then I would look for an alternative motion, if someone else would rather propose something else, or substitute motion. Or we can second it.
I don't have a substitute motion, so I can, I can second that. But with a further discussion before moving on to a vote. And one question I have for staff is, it's possible for us to set a floor. For example, if we were to vote on this and adopt option D with modifications, this could be the floor, and then we can add on, and then pen direction to staff to allow sites to determine modifications, to make it more liberal, so to speak. Why wasn't a site-by-site option evaluated? Or if it was, what was the discussion about?
So the question for staff, then, is why we're, why do we not consider site-by-site from the beginning?
One of the challenges we faced was finding a way to consistently apply the safety measures across the programs, and to especially not have it appear that at certain schools, there were different or more stringent measures than at, than at other schools. So finding a way that we could really ensure that there was a consistent level of safety provided for our students and our staff and the students in those programs across the school programs.
Okay, so we've had a second, so we can open this up for further discussion.
May I start?
Yep.
May I speak to the motion?
Please.
I appreciate everyone here tonight. I appreciate everyone coming and expressing your, your opinions. I, I value the fact that there are places for our children to go that are safe. I completely do. I completely understand that. I wish I had a magic wand where I could just say, okay, this is how we're going to do it. I, I like the idea of having student, or schools make up their own kind of what, what is best for them. But then I'm sitting as a board member, feeling like I need to look at our entire district. And when I have one school coming up and saying, okay, we can make it for this school, when I look at the list, there's three or four schools that are listed here, that the, the programs are going to go up, and that they don't have a park this close by. And I haven't driven around and checked out miles and all of that, but, you know, just gauging based on what I know of the community. I have to be fair, you know, and, and I have to be able to look at everybody and say, you know what, this is kind of how I'm looking at this. I see this program as an extended day. I don't see it as an Encore program. I don't see that there's any choices in the, in the matter, right? We either do it all, or we do not, right? And so we have to do it all. And so we have to have an extended day. So I look at it as an extended day. It means our day goes till six o'clock now across the board, and that's how I'm looking at this. I'm trying to see, you know, again, you know, I'm looking at all of our, all of our schools, everything that I've taken into consideration. I do want to acknowledge the fact that we do have lots of activities that do go on, so I don't, you know, when I look at the Facilitron piece of that, you know, when we talked about soccer teams coming we talked about soccer teams coming in, again, you know, you get people that come in, if I'm going to say no, I can't look at a soccer team coming in and saying, well, I don't know this person, I don't know this person, I, I don't know this family. You're, again, opening it up. And I've been, I've been here for a bit, so I have seen our campuses be wide open and the struggles that our schools have had because neighbors or people in the community have come onto our campuses, not just the one instance that just came up, but throughout the years, we have had incidents where, you know, people just walk onto our campus and they use our bathrooms, they leave their things, and, and there's things that I feel obligated to protect our children. I don't want to put them in a bubble, I get that, because I do know that there are, you know, we want to give them autonomy. You want to be able to allow our children to have that safe space because they have to make mistakes, they have to be able to live, right? And I don't want to be overbearing, but I also feel like it's my job to make sure that, that we have some type of safety measures up. We put in a policy just a little while ago that said that this is how we're going to do it, and, you know, and I'm looking at that, saying this is how we, that's how we did it. So, so that's what I'm coming from, that's why I, you know, that, that's what I'm thinking. I'd love to hear what you guys think.
I think the difficult thing for me is that the families from Golden Hill are, and, and it's not a one-size-fall, right? Liz that mentioned Pacific Drive. You know, we have different challenges here. I live right around the corner. We have an unhoused population that utilizes a park that can come onto campus, and so we've had to go to city council and, and lobby around, around that. But then you have Golden Hill not having a park nearby. And then we, you know, we also had to really rally around our families in passing a bond measure around, you know, the facilities and how to use the facilities. And so it's, it's, it's hard not to consider the fact that as taxpayers that want to be able to utilize the facilities and not having a local park, and we know that the city of Fullerton is in a dire budget situation. So I, I feel for the Golden Hill family, families that came to discuss this, and I also hear about the Fissler families having different needs and the Pacific Drive families having different needs. And so I don't feel comfortable voting on this situation, only because I don't think we have all of the data. I think it is important to have a community perspective at each school site, provide what their plan should be, and make a recommendation. That's what I have to say about that.
I hear you, and you're right. Our schools do belong to our community, and it is not, a one-size-fit-all is not ideal. But I'm looking at my notes, and I'm looking at the numbers, and we're going to have more than 3,000 students on our campuses after school. And we're going to have only 320 staff members. I think that's what I have, more or less, and 19 sites. And I don't believe personally that this is about denying access to you for our school. It's about delaying access. If I have to look at the proposed, if I have to look at the proposed option, which is option D. I, too, am not 100% happy with these options that were presented to us, because if we're talking about fairness, you know, I thank you guys for coming and for speaking. I don't think it's fair for somebody to have to walk or drive so many miles to the nearest park. And then I agree with you, Fissler, because, again, my kids are in the encore program, and the well-being and safety of our children is our number-one priority. And it is, as a board, our moral obligation to make sure that our kids are safe when parents are at work or when we leave our kids in the after-school program.
May I make a, do you want to continue?
I'm still.
Thinking about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Deliberating.
I don't want to cut you off.
But I just wanted to get those out, because I, I do agree with you, but I also agree with you. And so, like I said, and you, you all said it, this is not a one-size-fit-all. But this is already happening in January. We have over 3,000 students, so we do have to make a decision today. I don't think we have time, unfortunately, to go back and get more data. We don't have time to go from school to school. We do have to make a decision. But one of the best things about being able to make one of these decisions is we can always go back and see how each school, I agree with Beth, we can go back and say, hey, this isn't working for this site. We can always come back and bring the issue back, and we can say we would like to, you know, change this about this site, maybe open it up. I, I don't know. I, I can't tell you what's going to come in the future, because I don't know what's going to happen at each different school site. So I'm still processing.
Go ahead, Ruthie. So I've been, I've been processing this a lot, too. And I went and walked Golden Hill and looked at the perimeters and access and went, and went on Google Maps and looked at how far is this to the park and Laguna Road and all, just trying to kind of make sense of how do we make decisions? And really, again, came to the conclusion that many of you had, that there has to be some flexibility, because every park, every school, every geography, every culture on each school community has a uniqueness, and, and part of that's based on the geography and the kind of history of that group that decides how they use that space. So a couple of things I would like to say. I think for the idea of mo- the motion on, on the table right now of the D with modifications, I think that would be really difficult to enforce, even though we could, we could go through and decide, okay, is a scout troop, you know, a, a school program, well, what if there's five kids but, that are from a different school that come and join, you know, is that considered? Right now, we have a Facilitron and a facilities use pro- uh, policy that really screens who's able to use our spaces. We do check for insurance, we do check for background checks for adults. We make sure that our priority is school-related. If it benefits the kids at that school, they have first priority. So that's the PTA, that's the chess club, that's the scouts group that's mostly those kids from that school. So I believe that our facilities use agreement and policy does allow us to decide a priority for the use of our schools for those that are, for the use for our kids. And so I would, I would err on kind of the default being option A, where we have this openness to partners that we've established. They can come and use our facilities with that kind of agreement. And I think that then the direction to staff is to work at each school to decide how we work with those partners, to decide what spaces they can use, how do we just say, you know, this playground is off limits, because that's going to be used by the after-school program, but the field is yours for soccer. I think of the, as a community, to Miguel's point, if we were to suddenly cut off, you know, soccer practice or football practice from our schools, starting at four, five PM, and I, I think we'd hear a lot from our community, and it would have a detrimental impact on all of our youth. I, I'm concerned about that. That said, I, again, my, my proposal, it would be to adopt option A with the amendment that we look at access to city parks. I would suggest this addition, that any schools that are less, or, excuse me, in which there's no existing city park within half a mile would have the option of, and I misspoke, I think, I said, I said A, but I meant to say B. I'm sorry, that was my mistake. I was talking about, um, no. Hey, I'm getting confused. Let me, let me double-check. A is Facilitron. Okay, I did have it right, thank you. I think that if that's our default, but then those schools that don't have a park within a half a mile walking distance, that we would then implement, as I would suggest, a pilot project, option B. So for me, when I was doing my research and looking at distances, that's really only Golden Hill and perhaps Laguna Road. I would suggest that for this year, for the remainder of the year, from Ja- January through May, that we look at implementing option B as a pilot, where that's where the district pays for one hour of additional supervision to aid in that transition time. I know it's a compromise. I know it may not be the perfect solution for everybody, but at least if we started with the TK Kinder release, we give an opportunity for kids and families to have community, to collect on staff, to run around, get their wiggles out. You know, if you've got a TK kid and a sixth grader, you can stay on campus. During that hour, our after-school program is also getting their snack, getting their homework help. They're really not using the outdoor space in the same way. So I think we could experiment, if we do a pilot project, where we say, does this work? Can we have, you know, paying, I think it was for 100 days, $20 an hour for that extra hour, it, we're talking about $2,100 for the rest of the year, that we would pay for as this pilot pro- program to see, does it work and is it valuable? You know, and if after the end of these five months, by May, because I think we have to make our decision by May to then decide what happens next year, but we could say, yeah, only five families showed up consistently, it's really not worth the money or time. Or we might say, wow, this built community, you know, PTA is doing better because they're talking after school, and this is valuable, and I, I, you know, maybe it's something that we want to implement other places. But I think specifically for those, almost every other school in our community has a park adjacent on the outside space, or I think one of the furthest is Commonwealth. Mark is a little, less than a half a mile away to the nearest park, the baseball fields. So it really is those two, maybe Ladera Vista, but that's a.
Beachwood.
Beachwood. There's, there are green spaces and parks near Beachwood, according to my research, that are, they may not have playgrounds, but they're open play spaces. What's that, a cemetery?
Cemetery.
Is there, I think on the out, so far, well, we, we can ask Rob.
Sports complex.
Sports complex.
Complex.
Okay.
Right in the middle.
Yes. Rolling Hills has a park on the other side. They also have a playground on the outside of the park that allows parents, as they're picking up kids, to hang out and play. So they have a official city park as well as kind of an outdoor space for, on this, on the location. So that would be my proposal, would be, I'll restate it. My motion would be to adopt option A with the amendment that those schools with, that are .5 miles away from an existing city park would be excluded from that, but that those would be option A, where there's, closed until 6:00 PM with the exception of Facilitron registered users. And then I would propose a substitute motion that we have a pilot program at Golden Hill for the remainder of the year to implement option B, paying for a staff person to supervise a one hour of transition playtime on the space, so that we can see if that's a valuable option for our communities.
I'll second that.
I would like to discuss that option.
Sure.
Because I've had conversations with principals where we've discussed the use of Facilitron, and I know you said we have background checks, we have, but that is for the coaches.
Yep.
That is for, it is not for the people that are coming.
The parents.
Children, it is not for the parents. And so I've had conversations with principals that that is an issue with, only because we don't actually have, unless we're going to use and pay our encore people to be registering and to have a list of the parents that are bringing the children, how many children are in there. I mean, that is an issue for me, because, again, we just talked about liability and safety and the well-being of our children. So unless we are going to modify the way we register people or the way we process who is coming in, even though, if it's through Facilitron, who is getting, are they going to be getting fingerprinted? Everyone, who are the parents then going to wait outside of the gate and let the children in? Are we going to have a list of approved people that are allowed to enter the campus? Because now we're having people coming in, are they going to be allowed to use the restrooms while our students? So I have a lot of questions with, with the Facilitron process. I am more than happy to definitely compromise and have that one hour. So I, I like option B with out Facilitron, where, because if we are now allowing parents to come in, and we sup- we have a designated area, which is what this states, that we're going to allow parents to just come in for that one hour, but we're allowing people who are registering in Facilitron to just come in, use the, use the fields, who knows who's coming in, then we have the same problem. What are we really solving here? That's still an issue for me.
Yeah, which is, I mean, that's what our current practice is right now, that if a soccer coach is fingerprinted.
That has been.
Yeah.
That I've brought up to the superintendent, because few principals have brought it to my attention.
I, I guess I would say that that's something that I think our partners, I, I think there is an onus on our partners to be acting good faith, and if, you know, they're going to take responsibility to rent our, our facilities for a very low cost, then they also have to take responsibility to work out how to make sure that the adults that they're allowing in are safe. Now, I know as a parent, when my kid has her first soccer practice, I'm going to want to go and watch.
Yeah.
And be there, right?
And, and I completely understand, but is, how do we, as a district, how do we control that without that coming out of our pocket, without us having to pay for somebody else to be at the gate, checking a list and registering that? And then if we are going to allow that, then are we then going to put that in writing and say, if you're going to be using Facilitron, before you come, we need a list, and then we need somebody, and are you going to make yourselves responsible for anything that happens? Because then now we are allowing them to come on campus, and that is a liability that we are taking. I mean, we are, we do it already, but moving forward, is that something that we want to continue taking on? Is the question.
I think, I think there's kind of, there's two things. The one is, we can provide more clarity and expectations to our partners, to say, when you have a coach, you also have your parent volunteer that knows who's on the team and who their adults are, and you're not making sure that everyone who comes is accounted for. That is something we can put on them. I also think there is, I mean, you know, I'm first, I want to increase safety for our children, but I do think that there is a distinction between the kids that we are under our care, that we're watching out for, versus the adults that are trusting, you know, soccer team to care for their kids. They're not our responsibility. I have minimal concern for grandpa or dad or mother who comes to watch the soccer.
Assuming that mother and grandma are the ones that are bringing them, or presuming that the people that we're letting in are with the team or are with the group.
Yeah, yeah. We're putting that responsibility on our partner organizations to do that work.
I don't know how we're going to be able to control that. I, I, yeah, you can't.
You wouldn't control.
And then at the end of the day, at the end of the day, are, we are liable, because it is, we can't say, well, you let him in. No, but, you know, I didn't see him, so then now what's?
We end up becoming liable for anything that would happen to an FSD learner if we are allowing a group to come in and utilize a space, and for whatever reason, something happens to that student in the encore program, if, we can't, we're not, we're not going to be able to control that, right? So that's one of the liabilities that we expose ourselves to, that, in that proposal. But we are also considering the fact that if you are utilizing the facilities and you're a part of a group that has to maintain clearance and documentation, then now they become liable, and we put the onus on.
Which is why we've had increased expectations for all of our partners, where they now have to carry additional.
Current.
Sexual abuse molestation insurance, they have to go through child protection training, that, those are our expectations for the groups that we partner with. Rangers do not.
But not for the people that actually watch their kids, right? That's for the, the contract workers that provide the service.
The Facilitron, if I'm, if I go on Facilitron, I'm a soccer, if I sign up, I don't have all that, I don't have that. But we're not asking.
So I, I, I mean, just, just looking at all the options again, I am, I, I would be happy to, because of that, because of that liability, and because of what we've heard here tonight, I, I would like to do option D with the modification of B, which is opening the playground for one hour, where we close.
So, I don't, I don't think I, um, sorry.
Go ahead, James.
Hey, James.
Uh, I'm on a delay on YouTube, so it's kind of hard to, uh, tell when it's a lull. So I, I don't think I could support that option. I, I would continue to back the original motion that trustee bareman made and that I seconded, which is option D with the modification of some groups. I'm concerned, and parents and staff have expressed concerns to me that third parties are not always good partners, and they say they are vetting. are not always good partners and they say they are vetting people that come onto our campuses, but have, many witnesses, particularly that one public commenter, right, relaying concerns that that's not happening. I appreciate trustee Bearman's characterization of what's happening here. This is an expansion of the school day and not just an appendage that we tack on at the end of school. The numbers speak for themselves. Some of these programs are going to rival the sizes of some of our other schools. This is basically just a longer school day, which is why I support option D. However, I, I struggle to see how a kid who lives in the neighborhood that just wants to play some ball with his friends poses a threat to the kids that are also involved with Encore. And so I'm trying to think of a way that we don't necessarily, you know, maybe out the bathwater. So the option D kind of nugget that we were trying to unwind, which is what is a school club? I think there's something there that we can kind of mine out or maybe send back to the committee or staff to explore because the formation of clubs and affiliations on campus could be a vehicle that we could use to allow neighborhood kids. Every kid gets an ID, right? And they can form a club maybe to play on campus, staying out of the way of Encore. I think there's something there that we could explore further.
Yeah, I think my, my concern is then our encore staff have the feeling of responsibility for the kids that are playing pickup basketball if no adults are allowed on campus.
I, I agree. I mean, I agree. That's why I was suggesting option D with allowing the children to come in and stay an hour where we pay for one.
Option B.
Playground, yeah, but that's, no, option B is still opens to Facilitron. So that's why.
So option B minus.
Option B minus Facilitron, which is technically option D with the option for them to be able to come in an hour and allow an area for them to be able to use the playground. So it is what you said, Ruthie, without the Facilitron. So technically, I think you're talking about deal with our.
Go back and I'm looking at, you're going to do it for one campus, you're going to do.
No, yes, I'm not talking about.
Just do it for one. And so I'm looking at $75,000 a year.
I, I mean, we're, I, I was considering what Ruthie said, which is do it as a pilot program, do it as a pilot program, which is going to cost us, you said, $2,000. So if we consider that as a pilot program where we, I mean, keep things as is right now, I mean, with, I'm sorry, option D with the pilot program of allowing the one hour supervisory area for.
Golden Hill.
The remainder of the year. Well, it wouldn't just be for Golden Hill. Are we talking about just Golden?
Saying point five.
Point five would be Golden Hill is.
Oh.
So something to consider about this pilot program is I would recommend against specifying sites for a pilot program at this point because one, the principals have not provided their input, at least not for record. And then two, parents at those sites might express very different concerns. So specifying certain sites for a pilot program now, I'd recommend against if we're going to go down that route. But again, I would support the original motion.
I'm sorry, repeat that, you would support the original motion?
The original motion. Just D with the modification to school groups.
So we have.
My concern is with that, we're going to, we're going to have a really negative response from our community who depend on our schools for after school sports.
Or we, we are already, oh, we, we are.
We, right now, we have relationships through the Facilitron.
I'm going back to the fact that our job is to educate students. My, my job is to, to be a steward of our schools. I mean, yes, our schools are community, yes, our schools are open, but our first priority is our students. Our first priority is our extended day. Our first priority is our kids that we have in our, in our care. I, I wish we had more parks. I wish the city had a lot of money. I wish that we would be able to, you know, to find places for, for children. We could have them all go to the extended day. I mean, that will solve our problem. You could just have them come over, they could sit till six. Done. I mean, there's all kinds of ways to do this. I'm not making a joke about it, I apologize if it sounds like that. But, but I do understand that our community, our community is not, this is a no win for everybody, right? I mean, it's, it's a win for our children because our children are getting extended day, right? They're getting the opportunity for enrichment, our children that need extra time are getting that time. It's an opportunity for our kids to get more time in school, right? And, and doing those things and, and all those wonderful programs that we have to offer them. So my, my intention is to, first of all, the priority is my, is our students and our schools. I, you know, I, I value the fact that we have community and that we bring community together and our schools are that, right? We've always been. Our schools are the hub of the community, especially our, our elementary schools. That's the place where people feel safe and it's always been that way. And I don't want to eliminate that. I want people to feel comfortable coming onto campus. I want them to be engaged. I want all those things, but I also have an obligation to look at, this is my thing and I, you know, and I don't, you know, I, I, maybe we can entertain a pilot program later. I also don't want other schools to feel like just because they weren't here saying something that they feel like they got the short end, like, well, why is my school getting that pilot program, you know? And so I look at things like that. So for me, I, I go back to my D modifications on some kind of stu, hopefully school groups, we can figure that out. And, and as someone said already, you know, we, we'll start here. I mean, and if it doesn't work and we have to relook at this, we can relook at this. It's not, you know, this is not cast in concrete. You know, our, our jobs as, as board members have always been to be flexible. We've all, you know, there have been several things that we've gone back and looked at. You know, that's not working, that, you know, let's, let's take a look at that again. So when we get, because we'll, we'll get people saying, oh, my gosh, you know, no, where am I going to go? Where are we going to take our soccer practice? Right? There may, may not be enough parks, there may not, but, but we also have other schools. We have high schools, I mean, there's other places, so.
Just, just a few things to consider. So one is we do have current agreements with, so that needs to be taken into account. So if we're going to do it, then we would need to do it after the agreement.
Okay. Which is at the end of the school year?
I, I think it depends on the, yeah. Then the second piece that we need to take into consideration is we do have an agreement with the city for the sports fields specifically at the schools where we share the facilities and we have an agreement. So at this point, we would need to honor that, that one as well. So those are the two things. The three, the third one that is, unless you take a hard line stance, which didn't sound like you were going to do with D on the community groups, that's its own meeting. So if you're going to say, well, PTA is okay, Girl Scouts are okay, I almost think if you're going to, so if you make, let's say tonight, you made the vote on D. My suggestion, first of all, is to honor all agreements that we've made already. The second piece is, I think we, I think the board, you need to get into the weave on, on what that looks like. Because I think we will have families say, well, it's Girl Scouts, this, these are our girls. But someone else might say, well, yeah, but that's an outside organization. So we need, I think staff needs clarity on what you would do. So either tonight, say, D, that's the one we want, or say, we want D and we're going to accept groups, which I, I think you should.
Yes.
Have a long history of having groups involve PTA and all those sorts of things, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, those sites, types of things. So I think that's another meeting. If you're, so tonight, if you were going to vote on D, then bring back what D looks like for groups. Because one alternative would be, and again, this is a sports one, someone would say, these are our kids that go to that school. So as an alternative, you could actually have the kids on without the parents and only those coaches that go through some vetting process. That's its own discussion. And so if you're going that way, then bring that item back to look at which groups under which conditions. And, and so one of those conditions could be you allow kids and the, and the approves, whatever.
Coaches.
Coach or person and that creates its own issues, by the way, and you'll, you will have other parents in January here for that. So it doesn't solve the problem of who's up, it doesn't, it, it just changes who's going to be upset about it. So you have to stick with your beliefs and your values and your principles, but there's not enough clarity on D unless you're right now willing to say nobody's on. Because right now, I don't have clarity.
Yeah.
Around it.
Can you, maybe, this is a Rob question. Can you clarify how many groups are, we have current contracts with that are more like sports programs from the community, but not necessarily tied to a specific school site? Do we have any idea?
Through Facilitron?
Through Facilitron.
Facilitron.
So we're kind of just now getting ready to do field allocations for next spring.
Yep.
And I know we, we, the requests come into the city with the Little Leagues and the Rangers and if there's any other sports groups, but just about every elementary school and junior high school is used during the week and, and on the weekend. And so.
Before 6:00 PM. Before 6:00 PM on the weekdays.
Typically, the history that we've had in the past is they've come on about four o'clock, between four and 4:30 and between now and March, it really picks up with a time change.
Yep.
When the time change comes on, then they're going to be there, you know, they can get a couple hours in before it gets dark. But I would say off the top of my head, I, just about every school with the exception of maybe Richmond?
How many of these schools do we share a field with? Because I know not every school, so like Raymond, they have their own playground outside where they do.
So we have five, we have five campuses.
So only five campuses.
We have five campuses that we share with the, basically the, the property line goes right down the, that's Valencia Park, it's Woodcrest, it's Maple, it's Orange Thorpe, and it's, did I say Woodcrest? And Fern, well, there's five. Raymond is the sixth one, but that doesn't, doesn't come into play because those are separate. So they are at all of those fields. I would say with the exception, you know, even Fern, right, Eddie? I mean, sometimes we have typically, what you're seeing at the elementary schools are not necessarily Monday through Friday, you're not seeing games per se, you're seeing practices.
So you, did you just say Valencia Park, Woodcrest, Orange Thorpe, Fern and Maple?
Correct. Those are the five schools that.
Share fields.
The, the property line goes right down the middle of the field.
Okay. And to which our schools are, it would be considered on campus through the Facilitron rate. Sorry, I'm not on. So it would be considered a Facilitron use, our campus would have to be open before 6:00 PM to honor those, the use of those fields?
For those five fields, I believe if you read the agreement, it, it pretty much says, I don't have it in front of me here, but it's some, something to the extent of when the school day is over, okay? Now typically, we've had the school day that was over sooner, but now with this extended learning, our school day goes until six o'clock. It provides use of those fields 50% of the time, 50% of the year. And so if you consider school goes for 180 days, there's another 185 days that those fields are open to the community. So if you're going on a 50% basis, it's more than 50% of the time. And then when you put after four o'clock or after six o'clock, it, it honors that. But if you read the agreement, it, it pretty much says four o'clock or when the school day is, is over. When it doesn't interfere with the activities at the school.
Unattended consequences.
My concern is we send our city into chaos if we suddenly don't have fields for all of our sports programs that, you know, for years and years, they've expected and depended on these options.
Could we ask, could we ask for, so if in fact we kept it open for practice with Facilitron, right now, the requirement is they sign up, but we don't know who's coming with that group, right? We don't know the adults.
Yeah, so this, this is just how we've been working with our partners now, specifically, let's, we'll say Rangers, but they're not.
Yeah.
And so first to say, to affirm what Miguel, what you said earlier, which is we're liable always.
Yeah.
But, but that's really not why, so that's an important piece, but that's really not the heart, your heart. I know your heart is about the safety of kids. So that, so this is what we've told our partners and we're working with them because we also know anything new that there's some time. But basically that, yes, that there would be a, a list of people that, that can come in and that in addition to that, that yes, they have to have someone who's going to monitor it, but it is staff ultimately. I've met with Jason and we've said, ultimately, it's our responsibility. So if in the end, the partner isn't doing what they're supposed to, it's our job then to call up the Rangers, Golden Hill Little League, all those things and say, you're not following with the agreement.
And we can break that agreement if not follow.
So would, would that be something that we can bring back? Like we can revise access policies through the Facilitron agreement and come to that conclusion and say, hey, these are the five shared schools that we have by contract allow people to come in. We are now just looking into renewing the contract for next year, correct? Rob?
We're looking at spring of this year.
Yes, it's on a year-to-year basis. I was bringing up the contract here so I can read the, the four o'clock and the other wording that's in there.
So just a recommendation. First of all, what letter you kind of predominantly want to go, that's your call, you need to make that call. If you're going to go with D, then what I would, what I'm proposing is that we finish up and kind of agree with our community. In addition to that, bring back here at the next meeting, basically, A, how it could work with sports, what sorts of requirements? And, and one of those options may be that potentially parents don't come in or you do allow parents in with some sort of check-in process. And I believe though, that ultimately, we're going to ask the partner to do the check-in, but we'll still be responsible, which means staff will ultimately still have to be part of that check-in process. And then in addition to sports, looking at, and then you have to decide at that moment. You, you know, I would advocate though, we finish up any agreement we've had, but then you need to look at in the future what you want to do and, but it's not just about sports and you want to look for the principal. Because if I'm, if I'm part of a sports piece, I'll be like, well, it's a rec league and all the kids go to your schools, so it can't just be outdoor versus indoor. What's, what's the rule? So is the rule then it's going to be basically a predominantly number of the kids have to come from our schools? These are principles that you have to think about. It's not just indoors or outdoor. And then is it, is it an adult issue? So is that your principle? We are going to allow kids on that go to our schools for a variety of activities where there's a scout leader or a sports coach, but we're not going to allow parents? That's what you have to decide. Or we're not going to have any group on? Or, so I think, I think you need time and we could, as a staff, we could give you another or letter D for options. But I would say I would not make the decision tonight at 9:18.
So.
On, on the version of D. If, pick D if that's going to be your choice, but then ask us to come back with versions of D.
Or option A. So if I'm looking at option A.
It's pretty much what we're discussing.
It's what we're talking about, kinda. With some, so Facilitron, going back to Facilit, opening up, keeping Facilitron, but putting a few more little barriers there so that.
That's an option.
That we're not allowing just everyone to come on, that the people that are coming on are going to be monitored, so to speak. If I'm a principal.
I have a que.
I'm sorry? James, do you want to go?
Yeah, so what, yeah, I have a question, which is if we're going through field allocations now, one of the things that just keeps nagging at me is the, the sheer real estate, the, the square footage of the fields that teams are, like the Rangers and whatnot, are used to using, surely that's being reduced, right? If we're going to double Encore at some of these sites, they're just not going to have as much space to use to, to, to check out on Facilitron, is that correct?
It's correct because we're also adding in our own sports leagues as part of it, so yes.
So part of this problem that certain sites are running into where we have third parties that aren't maybe not the best partners on this in terms of. in terms of, you know, being good towards the field and checking adults out, that could resolve itself because there's going to be a smaller third-party imprint. Is that all correct?
Correct.
And you're advocating that we don't go for option D, but if this expansion goes into place Jan. 1, and we don't really have a lot of time, if we did want to protect, at least from Beb and I's perspective, that expansion, it'd be between now and and the start of that expansion.
I'm not making a recommendation against or for D, but what I am saying is if you're doing D and you've already opened the, you've already opened up that we want other groups, I, what we need is the principles for what those other groups.
The school-based groups.
For the school, and so when we say school-based.
What does that mean?
What does that mean? Yeah.
Could be a parent.
Yeah.
With a group of five kids in the.
Right. Yeah. President.
Yes.
If I can just.
I'm not okay with.
Clarification on.
Yes, please.
On the field. So this is on the five, the shared fields. And it says, District Maintenance Areas, which is the the fields. The district is maintaining both our property and theirs. The District Maintenance Areas shall be available for community and park and recreation purposes after school hours, Monday through Friday, beginning at 4:00 P. M. He's right, and then there's commas, beginning at 4:00 P. M., or Friday, comma, beginning at 4:00 P. M., comma, during school vacation periods, comma, and on Saturdays and Sundays, when school does not have a school function or field allocation scheduled. So well, that's open up to interpretation. But when I read does not have a school function or field allocation scheduled, is the way I read it.
Yeah.
So yes, the, at the time, the 4:00, but if something is scheduled on those fields, then it's not available.
And right now, we're saying that the expansion of our ELEP program means that.
Correct.
Their school is using it and they're not.
Yeah, and that would just be for the five fields, as not for the other 15 schools.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. I I I'm not okay with option A because now we're opening it up to the public. That's, oh, at the end of Encore programming, I apologize.
Option A is saying it's closed except for Facilitron.
Yeah.
Any, any.
Current contract.
Current contracts. But I do think that we're going to have to relook at our fields. We're going to have to relook at this because this is changing.
So could we, could we like, like was suggested, could we say option A, but can you come back with alternative? Or option A, 1, 2, 3, 4?
So you were looking for clarity on who uses our spaces when?
Yes.
Okay, I'm putting this down, spaces.
I have one clarifying question. With Facilitron, if I'm a, can, can I sign up for what? So say I am a team and I want to sign up for a particular school, can that school refuse me?
Yes.
Yeah, so 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 right now, and this isn't new, this part's always been true. If we need the facility because we're going to use it, then we have priority.
Yeah.
So if there's Mr. Lynch, and it's a Saturday night, and it's the gymnasium, and he's got a performance, that has priority over everything. So even though we actually do have a Facilitron with churches that have used it, they don't get to use the Facilitron, they don't get to use the facility because we have a performance. And that's true for everything, and that's always, that's been as true at least for 13 years. We have priority over any of the things. Now, where it gets tricky, where it's always tricky is a few years ago, we had places where we had two portables and we weren't using the space, and so it created opportunities for the community to use it. Part of the issue that we do have is we don't know. So one of the ideas is to, and we, and we're not going to know on January 5th, but at some point, probably in January, probably towards the end of January, we'll have a pretty good idea what those numbers are going to be. And you could, and you could bring it, so we could actually bring it in January, I believe it's the 20th, but whatever that meeting is. And with the idea that you're going to continue for the next month at least, what, all the agreements that we have with everybody. Because, by the way, that would create its own chaos if in the next two weeks, we we make this change. And then I think if, again, you, what not, what letter, that's up to you. But I will say that I want to manage the. I heard enough from the board that has opened up a lot of interpretation of what groups. And I think giving you a little time to think about that. And and don't think about it from a group perspective. Think about it from a principle. What's, what's the rule? So if you, because if there's a rule, we can follow the rule. But if you just say, well, you know, we like this group, so they're in, and this group we don't know, so they're not in, it also creates legal issues as well, like.
Absolutely.
Well, there are, you know, someone can argue, hey, my kids, you know, whatever, we'll throw in.
Girl Scouts.
All the Girl Scouts happen to go to this, and we do have sports leagues. The rec leagues where every kid in the rec league goes, pretty much goes to our full, they have clubs of its own. So you just have to come up with the rule on that. And I think you need a little time because it is 9:30.
Yeah, I will, as someone who I, Rooney, Takora, and I draft, worked as a committee to draft the facilities, ad hoc committee to draft the facilities use policy, which we recently adopted. I believe that we have these rules, and I believe that we have priority for school-based events. So if the after-school program is saying we are going to do a football league and it's six weeks and we need the field to do football, they have priority. If however, there's space where a classroom is available for Girl Scouts, or there's space for a soccer team to practice, they use Facilitron. And we have, again, clarity on who gets priority and where. And they do get bumped if if we say, sorry, we need this. So I I believe that that policy gives us the rules that we need to continue working with what I would say is option A, where the campus is closed until the end of the program, except for those agreements when schools prioritized, and then those that we have agreements with that we've vetted are able to use it. Now, I know it's complicated as far as maintaining those relationships and the space and who's monitoring, who's coming in. But I I I believe it's our staff who keep our kids safe. That's our job to watch our children. We want to make it as easy as possible for them to do that job. But we also have to have faith in our partners and and cancel the agreements with them when it doesn't work. And I think we could wait until January and see how those existing partnerships are going as our numbers are increasing to say, wow, at this school, we really need more field space, and maybe we can, you know, reduce that. But I think we don't know until we're there.
And I can live with option A.
I I can live after Rob said that we are looking into renewing for spring, and it's only five fields that we share. And the way it is worded.
Well, we allocate fields at all 20 fields.
No, no, I understand that, but the ones that we share fields with, so the.
Where they would be on our.
Where they would be on our, inside of our school, right? And we're renewing for spring, and the wording is more on interpretation of when school ends. And we could technically say our fields are being used by the Encore program until 6:00 P. M. Correct?
Well, yes, yes and no, but let's say, let's say Golden, let's say Golden Hill. We typically would rent out Golden Hill, say, to the Rangers or to a Little League team. And so we make that determination in mid-January. Because what these sports do is they put in with the city and they put in with us of their field needs. And then we work with the city to try to get all of the different youth sports on the fields. And so if, if if come January, we, we allocate mid-January is what we do. And and that goes all the way until the end of.
Is this a field that is inside? Is this a shared field?
Yes, inside the campus.
It's Acacia, it's Commonwealth, each would earn.
So it would be up to our staff.
That would press Orange Thorpe.
Who run the after-school program to then say, we need our fields for this space. Or, hey, we can just use the playground area, that back end of the field is okay for soccer. It's really up to our staff to say what their priority is and how they want to.
Right, and it's how we've, it's how we've run it in the past, except now what's happening after January is we're going to have more students.
More kids.
Program, and so space may be more limited, but it's how we've run it for the past two or three years.
But but we haven't had the fact that we are going to need the space. Now it's a different.
Now we have more students that are going to be on campus.
Right.
Space at some sites, maybe a lot, will be limited. And so what the youth sports have done in the past is they've said, okay, what do you got? Because if they don't have something, then they, then they have nothing.
I know we have some of our after-school program managers right now, and maybe Jason can answer this question. But do you think by January, you will know at each school site how much space is needed? Like, if you get to that point where you're like, we've got 300 kids now, we need two, you know, this, both playgrounds and a partial field, and we can still squeeze in a soccer team on the other end? Will we know that information?
Yeah, so our numbers aren't even projected at this point because they've already started registration. So our numbers are getting more solidified as we speak.
Yep.
And also the field usage will determine when our supervisors get to determine their programming with this. They've been working on it. So you probably, by second week of January, will know exactly amount of space and field usage we'd be using on a weekly basis.
So could we make sure that the order goes, our after-school programming decides we need this much space, guestimating based on their numbers? We want, you know, to be able to have at 2:30 or 4:00, we want to be able to have outdoor soccer practice for our kids. And then after that point, then we make it available. Could we make sure that there's priority for our staff to determine space use before it's then opened up to the city?
Based on your guidance, we will definitely go with the way you guys think is the best way to approach it. So we could definitely prioritize based on your guidance.
Okay, I think we're getting to the place where we have to make a decision.
We're going in circles.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think just one piece, I think the logistical piece is he, he's going to create programming based on the number of kids.
Yep.
And so in some cases, if he has 100 kids and he can use two fields, but if he has 200 kids, then he might need four fields or whatever it is. So he's not going to really know the field rotation until we kind of know the numbers, and we won't know the numbers probably until, I would say, at least the first week, probably the second week.
January 7, 12.
All students are supposed to start showing up January 6th, so I would say probably within two weeks of that, we would have more, more solidified.
And when do we give our answers to the city about our availability on Facilitron?
Typically, we meet with them mid-January. If we can't meet with them until February 1st, then we can't meet till February 1st, but we need to let those sports programs know.
Could we wait until February 1st after we have our January 20th meeting so that we can make a decision then?
I think we want direction before that.
Yeah, I would bifurcate two pieces. So first, I would still advocate that we kind of, we, we made a commitment to our teams.
You you got us on that one.
And so I would not on February 1 say to the entire city, don't get to use it. And I don't think that's the right way to do it. But I think we could make then the adjustment for the subsequent year, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Won't know until he lets us know. What I, what I was thinking is maybe you could come with that information in the, to the January 20th meeting so that then we can make the decision for future use, Facilitron use.
Definitely.
So could, so could I then could, since I made the motion for D with the modifications, it sounds to me like A is a more reasonable solution at this point. James, would you, that, would you second that one? Are you okay if if we went from the D to the A?
But A is already what we have now, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Nothing's changing.
So we don't need a vote. Right now, the campuses are closed until 6:00 P. M. Unless you have a valid Facilitron reservation.
Yes. So we could just.
So my worry, my worry here is that I I understand honoring agreements, right? But unless I heard mistakenly, there was no agreement that specify a guaranteed access to square footage at specific times. And we are doubling the number of kids on campus.
Correct.
The game done changed, right? Like, the game's changed. And so honoring previous commitments and reliance, I get that. But if we are contractually allowed to do so, then whether they like it or not, they're going to have a lot less space. They're going to feel the impact of this expansion regardless of what we do tonight.
Yes, yes.
But ignoring, but the the principles, you know, following Dr. Bob's advice of a following first principles here. If the principles were with this expansion, we need to relook at our safety considerations. I struggle to see how ignoring those safety considerations because we had a previous agreement to let them use half of our fields is following first principles. So that's a long-winded way of to say, I don't think so. I don't think I could support A right now.
Okay. And it seems like our board has come to the place where at this point, are, the motion still stands for D with modification or at least consideration of inclusion of school groups to be defined.
But but bringing up the fact that we have existing contracts. And those existing contracts go through the end of the school year, Bob?
I believe the end of the year.
So so what happens? So what happens if we have an agreement already at a school where we're tripling in size? And now we don't have room for that? Can we go back to them and say, well, we don't have room anymore? Or do we have to keep our?
Yeah, I mean, it's terms of logistically, how it would work is we would look at what fields are open. You know, we would work with with Jason on on what areas that are, that are free. And and then we would prioritize our kids.
Yeah, okay.
And and then at at this piece, at, you know, then at some point, we may find out in February that we have a lot more kids because it's free.
Yes.
And at that point, maybe we do have to be more restrictive. But I guess my, my recommendation is at this point to allow the sports at at least until, basically, we're creating a citywide problem with no solutions. And I'm, and.
Yes.
I, I don't want to leave the mess, so I would like to leave some order. And so instead of just telling the city and every group and every community, go figure out.
Yep.
February, I, I think it's pretty devastating.
So I I don't think we have a choice, really, truly. I mean, I think that we have to honor, we have to honor what's existing. We have to work with our groups to figure out, okay, if you are in an impacted campus, then we need to figure out to solve that, right? To get through the rest of the year. And I'm, I'm okay with that. But I am, but I don't want, you know, I don't want to to expand it anymore than the groups that are already in there.
So can, I think the one brace is that we can make the decision about our needs first before we then, we can honor the contracts and say, we're still going to be open, but we need X amount of space to do the work that we need to do. So that could be determined by mid-January and then discussion with the city and Parks and Rec by February to say what is available, even in our desire to honor that contract and provide space for sports to happen in Fullerton.
And then we talk about.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Go ahead, James, I'm sorry.
It it sounds like there's no board action. Basically, the consensus, the majority, I mean, is that there's no board action, there's no board vote required here and that the staff can just use direction on options to bring back. So like option A is status quo, you don't need to vote on that.
I still would like to make the proposal that we have a pilot program to look at option B for parent hours, one hour of parent supervision, to see if that's a a good solution for some of our schools that don't have parks nearby. And I, we can take a vote on the first and then decide if that's something you guys want to second.
Are you, are we going to?
So you're asking. Do we want to vote or?
A pilot, a pilot program for certain schools or every school?
I, my proposal is option B as a pilot program for one hour at one specific school. And my recommendation would be those without, with less or further than half a mile to a park.
What would constitute a park?
I think one that's listed by cities.
Are we talking about like a field or are we talking about a playground? I mean.
Oh, I would say open space, open. Yeah. Their day.
I I'm, I'm, I'm okay supporting that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is no action to continue, but simply recommendation to our staff?
We have to vote. We have to vote on that?
Well, James was saying we don't.
Oh, no, we don't have to vote on...
We don't have to vote on it.
But we like direction.
But you would have to...
Okay, but the vote, so to continue what we're having, which is option A, the direction from this board is to tell staff to continue on option A and to ensure that our schools are prioritizing the use and their needs of our fields before we then open the options to our partners that are booking it through Facilitron. Yes?
And that we hold true to the policy that was just created about...
Facility use.
That we're watching who's coming onto it.
Yes.
Access policy.
And we express expectations to our staff to work with those partners to ensure that there's clarity on who's being responsible for who's on campus and holding each other accountable in that relationship and agreement.
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, that's the direction to staff. Got it?
Yes, that's okay, James.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I would say, and maybe staff can bring back the piece about, and I think, you know, one of the things we heard at Fissler was that in essence, anybody's walking on campus. And I think staff could come up with a plan specifically to ensure that what that would look like, who's, first of all, we're always responsible, that goes without saying. But it would be shared responsibility because at this point, we don't want to just say to the ranger as well, "We're going to take it all." No, if you're going to be part of it, you have to be part of the solution. And if you're not following it, then at this point, it's not eligible. But I think we want some direction to respond to this.
Okay. So are we in agreement, board?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. James, what's the direction for staff?
So Bev is withdrawing her motion for option D, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Now, my second proposal, option B of parent supervision for, or parent staff supervision for one hour after school to allow community development on campus. A pilot program that we would try at one school. My suggestion would be Golden Hill, but it could be at staff's direction to decide whether that's a viable option for us in the future to continue that pilot program from January through May. Do I have a second for that?
I will second that.
You'll second that? Okay, and I will...
Can you just clarify?
Yes.
And it's, are we talking about the designated area?
A designated area.
I believe there was specifically Golden Hill. I think there was a playground area that was, that people did use, so I...
So it would be something that the staff could decide and based on, you know, whichever is the chosen as the pilot program. My suggestion would be Golden Hill, but a place where it's a designated area where students and parent families can stay for one hour and then after school, and then while especially the Encore team is doing more inside activities and then would exit after the one hour of supervision. And we have a second? Okay, any other discussion?
I understand why we're doing that, and I understand why you're proposing that. I still have a problem with designating one school at this point and not looking at the other schools and having to figure out what constitutes a park. So I'm not quite, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Okay. In the interest of it being 9:44, I'll just call a vote then. And we can, we don't have to have alignment, full agreement on this vote. So I will start the vote with James Dwight.
No.
No. Okay. Megan?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Vanessa?
I vote yes.
No.
Okay, thank you. So that passes three to two for a pilot program that will be determined by staff to explore the idea of a parent hour after school on campus. Okay. Okay, yeah.
9:44.
9:44. I don't know if this is a good sign for my first day as president. We'll move on to the next item, which is the free Encore program. We are looking at expanding after-school programming for free to both Parks Junior High as well as Fissler and Beachwood to our 7th and 8th grade students that are there currently. So we've had discussion, we've had input. I'm going to ask for a motion, either to adopt all of it or if someone would like to propose adopting the free program just for Parks and/or just for Fissler and Beachwood. Any motions?
Yep, I can make a motion. I'll make the motion to make it free for every single site in FSD.
Okay. Our motion is to make after-school care free for every site in FSD, which practically means expanding free care to Parks as well as 7th and 8th graders at Fissler and Beachwood. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, so it's been seconded. We can now have discussion. Would anyone like to add debate, discussion, additional input to this conversation?
I look at this and I truly do, you know, I look at junior high and I look at students that are in junior high and I truly do feel like they need a structured place to be to keep them, keep them going. But then I also look at, when I'm looking at teaching kids to read and I'm teaching and I'm thinking about having more aides in primary grades to help students get to the fact where they can read before 3rd grade and we can, you know, eliminate or, you know, address our achievement gaps. So this one's a really hard one for me because I do believe in the junior high experience and I believe that they do need more structure. But, you know, if I'm looking at money, which is what I'm looking at, is where do I, I know it's going to have to come from somewhere because right now, after-school doesn't include 7th and 8th grade. They're not providing us funding for that. So the funding that it's going to take to offer these programs free of charge at these schools is going to have to come from somewhere. And I personally, if I'm looking at my goals and I'm looking at where I, my, where I'm looking this year, I'm looking at our achievement gap, I'm looking at students and achievement. This, I mean, for me, I just can't, I want to do it, but I just don't know where that money is going to come from. And I don't want to take it from one program to put it to this because for me, I have a different priority.
And to be clear, we do have after-school programming paid for by ACES for our other school sites. And so there is an equity-based program already happening in our district for Nicholas and Ladera Vista Junior High. So I just want the public to be aware that those programs do exist, especially for our families that are working. And I think it's important that we clarify that as well as we're going through this consideration. And to Bev's point, equity is an important aspect of where are we taking our dollars and how are we distributing them, you know, to improve literacy rates, to improve mathematics attainment. And could we leverage those dollars in other areas to improve instructional outcomes and student learning outcomes or even improve the quality of teaching and what our teachers and classified staff are going through and experiencing on a day-to-day? I think those are things that we need to consider.
I gave James a second so that we could have this discussion and this conversation because I agree. Equity doesn't necessarily mean having the same program at every school. It means using the funds that we are generally allowed or given to access the support where it is needed. Bless you. You know, with the highest need, where the highest need is. So that's why I wanted to have this conversation. It's not always about making sure that we have, and I agree, I think if we had, I believe, the demand that we do have at other schools and at other campuses and the need, I would definitely support spending $248,000 a year. But I do not. And for that reason, I don't agree with spending $248,000 out of our general fund for this.
The other proposal that, you know, if there is a community demand at Parks Junior High and there is a local assessment done and there is a huge need from that community and staff can provide us that data, is it going to break the bank to have a one-time funding or, you know, for one year for Parks Junior High? No. In terms of our general fund, in terms of what we're putting away? So that's an alternative that we can also look at as well is, are we going to allow this for Parks Junior High because there's a huge community demand there versus at our K-8 sites? That's another way we can bifurcate if that's a discussion that we want to have as well and if there is demand at Parks to actually have a free after-school program.
But if you ask the student, if you ask the parents at Beachwood and Fissler if they had it, they, you know, if we're going to do it for Parks, then we need to be open to our other junior high students as well. I mean, I'm not saying Parks Junior High students don't need this. They, you know, obviously, you know, I am sure that people would sign up for it if it was free. They would still want it. I think if you offered free programming to 7th and 8th grade students at other schools as well, the two that wouldn't be served, they would, I'm sure you would have some demand there too. So if we're going to ask demand at Parks, I would ask that you ask demand at the other two schools as well.
But also, could we explore an alternative? Would we be able to have like a partnership? Like, right now, we have a partnership with Boys and Girls Club and Higher Ground and OC United. Could we offer a partnership? Or could we do maybe...
We pay for those right now.
Yeah, we pay them.
For those clubs, we pay for Higher Ground. They're not free.
Well, at this, at this school, we do. Parks, I mean, we pay for the other programs. So a partnership where it's like a sliding scale, where maybe it's not completely free, but if the district pays for a certain percentage or a certain amount, and then the families pay for something else. I mean, it would be...
Yeah. So right now, we have two students that receive assistance from the county because of their family...
For Parks.
Income, yes. And the rest don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, I think is the standard for applying for those support. Yeah. So if we, I mean, it's possible we could reduce the cost for all families to ease the burden of working families. For some, it'd be a big win and some would be, okay. But right now, we are offering at least support for families that do have the financial need. James, I wonder if you could clarify what compelled you to want to bring this item and what's convincing to you?
Sure. So as a clarifying matter, just two things. One, it looks like there's 10 students that might qualify for free and reduced lunch or otherwise unduplicated people counts, but only two of the 10 are getting scholarships from the county. Eight out of 10 are still paying, even though they are UPP. Second thing, I understand competing priorities, but money that you, if you decide not to fund the expansion here, you're not going to spend that money because that money is coming from the general fund, roughly over $20 million that we have. It's not like this 250 is now going to be automatically spent towards addressing some of the issues that you made because that would require a separate vote. So this is not robbing Peter to pay Paul. This is dipping into the general fund, of which we have $20 million. To the point of like, what compelled me to do this? It's the people that, the numbers speak for themselves at the elementary school level, that there is a huge need among working parents to have reliable, trustworthy care after school. And that once it becomes affordable in the form of free, the demand is gangbusters, right? Just because they enter the 7th and 8th grade does not make that demand go away. It's clearly something that our working families need and something that I want to continue to provide them in the 7th and 8th grade. And Parks is the only program in Fullerton School District that you still have to pay for. And if that means that we have to go into the general fund, yeah, I think it's worthy, I think if you do it because it provides a safe environment for our children at the junior high level where they might go somewhere else and do other things instead of being at Encore. So that's my argument.
Thank you, James. Just to clarify of the, when we were doing our research and asking for clarity, of the 10 students that we said could qualify under the UPP standards, are those additional eight or so students it's because they're English learners, not because of economic need? Is that correct, Dr. Brown? Of the eight students that we said, you know, there's, I think, 10 total that qualify for UPP standards based on ELOP standards. Two of them are receiving economic aid, I believe. My assumption was the other eight are English learners and not because of economic need. They're not able to receive those. They don't receive scholarships because their families don't qualify under that.
That's correct.
Free and reduced lunch.
UPP is not, they're not one in the same.
Yes.
Can't qualify for SES just because, you know, and vice versa.
Sure, sure.
Yes.
So being multilingual learners absolutely could benefit from additional support and programs, but it's not the same as economic need.
Absolutely.
And all grants and different funding sources have different requirements. So UPP is very much linked with ELOP, which is TK6. ACES does not go off of UPP counts. ACES, which was what LV and Nicholas have, are usually more of economics or income background. So it's hard to, it's apples to oranges. And what our families need in each junior high level or 7th, 8th grade levels do vary from what our elementary, just as much as upper elementary to lower elementary have different priorities and needs. As you move up the scale of age, there's different expectations, different things they all do. So it's hard to hit a moving target just so it's, it's not to say one is right or another, it's just, it's different. And it's hard to gauge all the need because we're not determining our need, we're just offering what we can offer.
So if we had more students at Parks who wanted to be a part of this enrichment program, after-school enrichment program, and they qualified for scholarships, they would be able to go for free?
Currently, at Parks, if they applied to like the county that they're grant, they are able to get it through them.
Is it an extra step for them to apply to the county to receive that scholarship? Or do our staff make that happen?
I believe they would have to take those steps.
Okay, so it's possible families could really benefit and maybe even qualify, they just haven't gone through the process, to apply.
Would, would we be able to help them go through the process? If they come to us and say, "I would like to be able to be a part of it, could you please help me fill out all the paperwork? What do I need? How can I enroll, apply, qualify?"
Yeah, and I- There's kind of a little bit of this, like, misconception that one school is the Hill School, and one school is Title I School. I mean, Park serves Valencia Park. And so, to your point, I think if we had students that were below our certain level, either poverty line, or the unduplicated, or free and reduced, we could provide scholarships for the kids. We're not talking a huge burden. I mean, at this point, you had 32 kids, and potentially, if we had eight, eight or nine kids, that, that's not going to break the bank. And if we talk about equity, that is a good argument for use of helping some kids that maybe are attending the program and fall into that free and reduced. So you could do, there is maybe a compromise.
You could, so the motion could be, well, it would be a revision in that we would say, we'd be establishing a scholarship program to subsidize the cost of after-school program for a set criteria, and we will ask staff to come up with, or we can direct staff to come up with, what are the qualifying criteria of a subsidized after-school program for the groups that need it the most at that school site.
But are we then just talking about, because I agree with Bev, are we just talking about Parks, or are we talking about, because we don't currently have a program at Fisler or Beachwood?
Three that aren't-
We would have to start, so we would have to start a new program.
Be all three that aren't being served.
Yes.
Right, we'd have to.
But the existing programs at Beachwood and Fisler could be expanded to include seventh and eighth grade.
Right.
And we would simply scholarship or provide, you know, reduce costs for those who qualify based on a criteria that we created. And Parks would continue as is with a pay program, a fee-based program, but we would increase the ability to offer support for families that financially qualify, or if we decide we want to include English multilingual learners because of the benefit that it provides them.
Right, provides for language acquisition.
Yes.
School and practicing.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's an alternative motion?
That is an alternative motion.
Okay. Do, I'm sorry, I should have-
And then we could bring, and we could bring back potential criteria.
So the alternative motion would, or subsequent motion, would be to establish a subsidized or reduced program for families that need the support, and we would direct staff to define that criteria that aligns with equity populations that support at Beachwood, Parks, and Fisler.
Okay, so that is the-
I would second that one.
Okay, seconded. So that's the subsequent motion or alternative motion that's on the floor right now. We will vote on that before then returning to the first motion, which was free access for all students, okay? So the subsequent alternative motion to establish a program to support students in highest need, I will take a roll call vote for that one, then, okay? So we'll start with you, Trustee Alvarez.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
James?
Aye.
Okay, and myself, yes. Okay, so that passes five, and it replaces the need to take a vote on the first motion, then. Okay, we're moving past her now, guys. That's good.
Okay.
Woo-hoo!
All right.
Almost, almost, guys.
Can you pull your mic a bit closer?
James, is this three hours ahead where you're at? It's really tomorrow.
Sure is.
It's tomorrow for you.
Ooh.
So-
Welcome from the future.
Yeah. We're now to the consent agenda. Gosh, we've got to move, I'm sorry, guys, need to move fast. So consent agenda, are there any items discussed or polled before vote on this item?
I, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Alvarez, seconds. Okay, vote. I'll start with you, Trustee Berryman.
Aye.
Approve the agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
James?
Aye. I'm an aye, but just want to put a comment, shout out to the additional stage funding.
Additional stage funding, excellent. Including those costumes. Okay, and mine is the final vote to approve the consent agenda. Okay, next, we are going to be reorganizing our, both our district facilities corporation and our district finance authority. I don't know that we need Dr. Rob to introduce this issue. This is basic, yep, okay. Okay, let me make sure. Okay, so as president, I will adjourn this-
We're coming back, so-
But knock on it, don't go anywhere.
I will adjourn this meeting of the Board of Trustees at 10:03.
Let's go!
And as the new president, I'm calling to order the annual organization meeting of the Fullerton School District Capital Facilities Corporation at also 10:03. And our first order of business is we will have before us a slate of officers to be nominated for the Capital Facilities Corporation. They are Ruthie Hanchett for President of the Board of Trustees, who will be appointed as the President of the Corporation; Vanessa Estrella, who will serve as the Clerk of the Board of Trustees and will be appointed as the Secretary of the Corporation; Dr. Bob Pletka, Superintendent of the District, who will be appointed as the Vice President of the Corporation from December 9 through January 31, 2026; and then Dr. Chad Hammett, the Interim Superintendent, who will assume the role effective on February 1, 2026; and Dr. Robert Coughlin, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for the District, who will be appointed as the Chief Financial Officer of the Corporation. Do I have a motion to approve this slate?
So moved.
All right. And second by Trustee Estrella. Okay, so we'll take a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Berryman?
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Aye.
Okay, James?
I think I heard you say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, and aye from me, great. So the motion carries, sorry, I don't know why I sounded, I got excited about that.
Excited?
Because we're going off momentum.
Okay.
Adam President.
So our next order of business is to declare the meeting dates approved and adopted by the Fullerton School District Regular Meetings of the Board of Trustees for the 2026 calendar as to also be the regular meeting dates for the Fullerton School District Capital Facilities Corporation. So do we have a motion to approve the dates, which we have already approved for our FSD meetings? Great, and a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Let's start again down the line for vote, unless there's any discussion, we'll start voting.
Aye.
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 James?
Don't hold up the line.
Aye.
Okay, and aye for me. So the motion carries with five ayes and no nays. Okay, so I will adjourn this meeting of the Capital Facilities Corporation at 10:05. Okay.
That was a fast meeting.
Two minutes, okay, we're moving on to the second one.
Not habit.
So I am calling to order the annual organizational meeting of the Fullerton School District Financial Authority at 10:05, and our first order of business, we have to be before us is a slate of officers to be nominated. They are Ruthie Hanchett for Board of Trustees, President, who will be appointed as the President of the Authority; Vanessa Estrella, Clerk of the Board of Trustees, who will be appointed as the Clerk of the Authority; Dr. Bob Pletka, Superintendent for the District, who will be appointed from now until January 31; and then Dr. Chad Hammett, Interim Superintendent, who will assume the role effective February 1, 2026; and Dr. Rob Coughlin, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for the District, who shall be appointed as the Director, Finance Director of the Authority.
Finance Director.
Finance Director. So do I have a motion to approve this slate?
So moved.
Okay, and second, great. Okay, we'll vote now, then. I'll start with you, Berryman.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and I say aye. So that is five ayes with no nays. And our next order of business is declare the meeting dates approved and adopted by the Fullerton School District Regular Board Meetings of the Trustees for the 2026 calendar, which will also be the regular meetings of the Fullerton School District Financing Authority. Do I have a motion to approve the dates?
So moved.
So moved, okay.
Second.
Second from Alvarez. Okay, then we will take our vote, starting with Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for myself. Great, then we will adjourn the meeting of the Finance Authority at 10:07.
Two minutes.
Okay, and we will reconvene the regular meeting, the Board of Trustees, also at 10:07. Done. Okay, so we are moving on to our, let's see.
Item C.
Item C, thank you. Okay, we already approved the Board of Trustees' dates, so we can bypass item C, and we are going to look at ratifying and approving our tentative agreement with CSEA.
Yes, so this is, brings our negotiation with CSEA to a close for the 25-26 school year, and this approval by the Board would implement this tentative agreement.
Do I have a motion to approve and ratify tentative agreement with CSEA?
I will make-
Okay, so I've got Trustee Estrella moving, and-
Second.
Second being, okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay. Alvarez will start.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ruthie, your mic?
Thank you for reminding me about my mic, I appreciate it. James Chode, what say you for your vote for tentative agreement? Aye, okay, and aye for myself. I need to put this gavel down, it gets so exciting.
Gavel.
Okay, next item E is to ratify the tentative agreement with the Fullerton School District and Fullerton Elementary Teachers Association.
So moved.
Okay, and our second?
Second.
Okay, great, we will start voting with Trustee Berryman.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Great, and aye for myself, so that is 5-0, approval of our agreement with our teachers. Next, we will approve, ratify the compensation adjustments for Fullerton School District Management Group, including the confidential employees, superintendents, assistant soup, business, all the assistant soups, to follow the same contracts that our teachers and our classified staff have and will be enjoying. So do I have a motion to approve this adjustment to the Fullerton School District Management Group, confidential employees? So moved by Vanessa Estrella.
Second.
Second from Trustee Berryman, and then let's start voting with Miguel.
Aye.
Aye.
I want to say that, you know, we're rushing through this, but I appreciate all the hard work that this takes, because this has been months and going through this. So thank you to everyone for working together and making all this happen, so thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay, and James?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for pausing, Bev, to say that. We appreciate our, all of our staff. Next, we will be looking at ratifying and approving the amendments to contracts for the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, the assistant soup of business services, assistant soup of educational services for the 25-26 school year, so fiscal year, excuse me. So do I have a motion to approve and ratify these amendments to the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great, and Trustee Berryman, you start with the vote.
Correction.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. To clarify that we did, I'll bring that up. There was a mistake with Dr. Bob Pletka, Superintendent, contract. The amount of pay, salary was incorrect. We caught that, and has been updated both in the agenda that we presented with tonight, as well as online for any who wish to see it. So with the amendment of the updated and corrected contract for Dr. Bob Pletka, we will go ahead then and, well, do we need to have a second motion with the amendment to the contract?
So moved with the amendment.
Okay, great, thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. Thank you for reminding me, Bev. Okay, so we will take a vote, starting with Dr. Bev.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and aye from me. Okay, moving along to our memo of understanding with the Fullerton School District and California Employees Association, or CSEA, Chapter 130. This is to release our CSEA President or Designee effective immediately through the end of this 2026-27 school year. We are allowing our President to do what she does best and work on behalf of her constituents and her members, and so do I have a motion to approve this memo of understanding with our CSEA President?
So moved.
Second.
And just to clarify, it's not, we're not releasing her of her job, we're keeping her extra-
Extra time for her-
This would just give release time on Wednesday for her to work with the district.
Right.
Yes.
And it's more in alignment with what we do with our teachers association as well.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, aye, and thank you, Tanya, for all your work that you do. Okay, we're moving on to aye, approval and ratif, approve and ratify memo of understanding with CSEA regarding compensation for coaching and other related activities during the 2025 school year. I know we discussed this creates more opportunities for our classified staff to do some of the adjunct after-school duties, providing opportunities for them to sometimes do things that they're really great and love doing, as well as take a burden off of our teachers that may feel like they've got plenty to do.
This kicks in especially when we have no certificated staff at a site who are willing to take on maybe a coaching duty, speech and debate, or esports, and this would allow a classified employee to do that in place when we don't have a certificated staff member who would take that on.
Great evolution.
I move that we approve or ratify this memo of understanding.
I second. Okay, Trustee Estrella, we'll second it. Okay, then we'll start the voting with you, Miguel.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for myself, thank you so much. Then we are at item J, approve and ratify revision of the MOU with the Fullerton School District and CSEA, Chapter 130, for early retirement incentive for the 2025-26 school year. Dr. Chad, will you explain a little bit more for our community about what this means?
Yes, we have a provision in our contract that an employee who retires at age 55 with at least 10 years of district service is provided with retirement benefits until they become Medicare eligible or age 65. Because of the retirement incentive we're offering, we do have a group of employees who are eligible to retire under pers, who are, who are at least 50 years of age and have 15 years of service with the district. So this would allow for a bridge for them to have a few extra years of retiree health benefits coverage until they reach their Medicare eligible age.
Thank you so much. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this revision?
So moved.
Okay.
I don't want to see all these young people go, but-
Those youngsters at 50.
Young at 50, yes.
Yep.
I second.
Great.
Did we get a second yet? A second?
No, you second. Okay, Berryman, second. Okay, then we'll take a vote, starting with Trustee Berryman.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for myself, that passes 5-0. We are now at K, which is approving and ratifying the MOU between the Fullerton School District and Teachers Association to change eligibility requirements of Article 22A and the retirement benefits that are afforded for the 25-26 school year. Dr. Chad, do you want to share a little bit more?
Yes, this does the same thing for, that it did for CSEA, allowing an employee who is 50, who has 15 years of district service and can retire under stirs, to be able to have that bridge of the few extra years of retiree health benefits that normally would have started at 55 and can start as soon as 50 years of age.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this?
Sadly.
Sadly. Okay, so Bev, motion, and Miguel, you want a second?
A second.
Second, okay, we'll start the vote with Trustee Berryman.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for myself, great. Okay, we are at a new board policy, policy 3440, about inventories and assets. Not a lot of discussion, but-
Exciting.
Dr. Chad, you want to, is there anything you need to tell our public about this?
No, we took, brought this for a first read, there were no recommended changes or revisions by anybody from, by the Board, and so this is being brought back to the Board to comply with state law, to ensure that our policies are in compliance.
We will keep track of our items that we purchase and hopefully keep them up well. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this new board policy, 3440?
I'll make the motion to approve the policy.
Second. Okay, then we will vote, starting with Trustee Berryman.
Aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, and aye for myself. Okay, then we are looking at adopting Resolution 2526-8, authorizing the closure of bank accounts at Pacific Premier Bank. Dr. Rob, you want to give us an update on that?
Yes, I'm going to do this. Anna, do you have the clicker?
I thought he was coming over here to-
We have no clicker. So what this is, is we've had a, we had a petty cash account at the Premier Bank, we also had an active workers' comp account that we are closing, and so it requires the Board action to close those accounts.
Okay, we don't need these bank accounts any longer.
I move that we close the accounts.
Okay.
Second.
All right, then let's start the vote with Miguel Alvarez.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Okay, aye, so that passes. Okay, aye, so that passes. So we are now to our last item on the agenda for the night, which is to approve our district's first interim financial report with a positive certification.
Aye. Oh, sorry.
I've had it done.
Got to give Doc, Dr. Bob is off.
You don't have to hear the certification if you want, you can go ahead.
I mean.
We approve.
Just kidding.
I second.
You go.
Should we time him?
Should we wait for Dr. Bob?
Uh, I think you can continue, he's, he's been through a lot of these.
I have.
He knows.
So Anna, if you could, okay, so this is the first interim report, and on the next slide, what this does is this covers the financial status of the district from July 1st to October 31st. Plus, we review the following two years of revenue and expenditures. And if you can click forward two slides, please. What I'd like to do, uh, click a slide, please, forward there, thanks. And then one more? Okay, so what we want to do here is we want to look at what's happened to revenue from the time we adopted the budget last June to first interim, which is October 31st. And we see that, uh, LCFF sources went up about $680,000, uh, went from 142 to, uh, .04 to 142.72, that's an increase of 680,000. This was through a combination of, we received 1.27 million more in TK funding, however, remember, we had a loss of about an extra 200 students that we didn't account for, we, it surprised us. And so that UPC, which is, UPP is the percentage, this is the count, that loss of those students of about 100 students, uh, decreased, uh, funding $588,000. So it netted out at 680,000. State lottery, uh, revenue decreased, uh, 361,000, plus some minor, uh, other state revenue for a net, net of 410,000. And then, uh, for the local, the Gatsby 31 fair adjustment, uh, decrease, this is an accounting entry, it's an accounting rule that requires the school district to report the market value of their investments as of June 30th. So we actually had an increase last year of 417,000 on June 30th, then we have to back it out, uh, on this interim report. If we had had a loss, we would have recorded a loss, and then we would have made a gain for this year. So it's just an accounting entry that we have to do.
Is this the first time the lottery's ever gone down?
Um, I think so in a while.
Not buying tickets anymore? Huh, sorry. Oh.
There you go. All right. So overall, revenue is down, uh, from adopted, $160,000. Now, when we look at the unrestricted expenditures, this year, uh, at first interim, our expenditures include the negotiated settlements with the associations, where last year they did not. So that's what that little asterisk is in there. So if you see the certificated salaries, uh, they went up $750,000. Classified salaries went up $940,000. Employee benefits went down, 220,000. Books and supplies went up, 330. On the next page, I'm going to kind of explain why this happened. Um, services and operating expenses went down slightly, 600,000. Capital outlay went down, thank you to the bond, about 490,000. And other outgoing transfers, um, decreased, uh, expenditures in a, in a good way, um, about a half million dollars. So overall, expenditures from adopted budget to first interim went up about 1.5 million. And so on the next page, it kind of explains in a little more detail, for the certificated salaries that netted to an increase of 750,000, we had the 1% ongoing increase of 695,000 with the 1% uh, one-time salary increase, but then we also had $640,000 in unfilled vacancy savings and other adjustments, so we were able to reduce the budget in that way. Classified salaries increased 247,000 for the, uh, the 1% ongoing, plus another 247 for the 1% on ti- uh, one-time. And then another increase of 402,000 increase, um, there were some unfilled vacancies, but there was also, we had to make some adjustments, we're seeing an increase in classified overtime, classified extra time, and classified substitute. So that's why overall, those increased 940,000. Employee, employee benefits decreased for a net of 220,000. Um, we did have some increases because of the, uh, negotiated settlements, but we also had some unfilled vacancies and some other adjustments where we were able to bring that down. Materials and surpris- uh, supplies, not surprise, showed a net increase of 330. This is kind of interesting. Last year, we had a carryover of about 2.6 million dollars, so we had to put that in to the budget. Not uncommon to have carryover from year to year. It ranges anywhere from about 2.5 million to 4 million dollars. So we had a carryover of 2.6. We put it in, but I know we're going to have a carryover again of at least 2 million dollars, and it will probably be closer to 2.8, maybe even 3. So we put the 2.6 million in, increased expenditures, but then we backed out 2 million, uh, plus some other transfers, that's why that one went up, 330,000. And then, the biggest one, the contributions increased, uh, contribution, uh, from the unrestricted to the restricted, because there's not enough restricted money for special education and routine restricted maintenance. So that's been a trend in our district and in many districts, special ed costs just going up, and the special ed funding is not there, so it has to make a contribution from the unrestricted. So if you can go to the next slide, um, this kind of shows from adopted budget and where our ending balances, um, we started the year, we thought we were going to start the year with 25.22 million, we actually started with 25.74. When you put the, uh, revenue in there of 149.21, and the expenditures of 150, it shows us with a projected ending balance of 24.91 million dollars. Now, that doesn't mean we necessarily have 24.91 million dollars to do something, anything we want with. Of that money, uh, we have, uh, reserve for economic uncertainties, which is a requirement, that's 6.45 million. We have 11.5 million in committed funds. The Board of Education, a few years back, uh, passed board, committed 11.5 million dollars, uh, for declining enrollment and also for, um, maintenance projects that might need to be done. So that money is committed, the only way we can get, get to that money is if the board uncommits it. Um, different than assigned. Assigned, uh, is money that we've set aside for textbooks and also that carryover. Remember how I said I backed out the 2 million dollars? It's right there, two of it's right there with that 4 million, plus 2 million for textbook adoptions in the future. And then really, uh, unassigned is what you have available to spend for this year, there's 2.79 million dollars. That's the way the budget looks for this year, right now at first interim, it's where we think we're going to end up. If on the next page, I want to show you the assumptions that we used. Um, some of these, we get to, uh, make our own assumptions, some of them, we don't have a choice. The statutory COLA, we do not have, we don't have a say in that of what we think it's going to be. This is a calculation based on eight quarters, and for this year, this, the statutory COLA was 2.3%. Next year, for projections, we use 3.02, and the following year, 3.42. I guarantee you those numbers will be different next year, they could be lower, they could be higher, but they will be different because it's a moving target. Uh, the way we figure out, uh, LCFF dollars per ADA is we take our LCFF dollars that we receive, divided by our ADA, and you'll see that, um, as the COLA goes up, uh, the LCF dollars per student ADA goes up about 400 dollars a year. Our enrollment, you'll see, enrollment is going down. Uh, it's nothing new, this year, 25, 26, our enrollment is 10,864. We're projecting a decrease next year of 300. And then what we've done in the past, uh, because it's not used in the calculation for revenue, is we just keep the out-year flat. It could go down 200, but it could also go up 200. Uh, I'm not, I, I, I don't necessarily feel comfortable sitting here and saying, oh, it's going to go down 3 or 500 dollars, and then the board, because of that, will take action, thinking, oh my gosh, we've got to do something now, and we're going to start cutting programs. So this is a practice that we've done. Uh, when we come back for the budget in June, we will adjust that 27, 28 number and, uh, get a little bit more in line. The way that we're funded is we're funded on the prior three-year average. So this year, for our funding, this year doesn't even really matter, it's the prior three-year average, and you can see that for this year, our prior three-year average is 11,418. That's six, about 600 students higher than where we actually are. So that's a nice little safety mechanism that the state has for us there. You'll see that next year it goes down, the average goes down 300, and then also another 300 in the following year. From that three-year average, we, uh, we make the assumption of about a 97% attendance rate, and that gets us to a funded ADA of 10,945, and then for next year, 10,778 and 10,547. So you can see why, if I had brought down that enrollment of 10,564 and 27, 28, it would not have affected or impacted any of these numbers, because we're funded on the prior three years. As far as our unduplicated percentage, our UPPs, uh, continues to be pretty strong at about 60%. And regardless of, uh, any negotiated, um, settlements, uh, step in column for all groups, uh, increases by, um, about 1.1 million dollars a year. And we continue to have increases to STIRS rates for certificated and PERS rates, with the exception of next year, we're projecting a slight decrease of 46,000. So these are the assumptions that we use, they're not guesses, but they are the assumptions based on the best information that we have right now, and it's how we, uh, we put the budget together. So the last slide, part of the first interim is we have to look, we, we don't just balance or look at a budget for this year, but we also have to look two years out. This is part of the AB 1200, where we have to show that we, uh, meet our financial responsibilities for this year and two-plus years. So for this year, right now, we're projecting, um, deficit spending of about .83 million or 830,000. Remember when I said there's probably, there's going, I budgeted in 2 million in carryover, there's probably going to be more? This will be very close to a balanced budget for this year, and we've already put in the negotiated settlements. For next year, um, we are looking at a deficit of about 1.8 million dollars. I know that seems like a lot, um, this is at 100% spend-down budget, and, uh, while the state is projecting a state deficit, they're also projecting that revenues were a little higher for last year and this year. Some of that money should be coming to schools, districts in the form of, uh, one-time money under Prop 98, so that will help there. Also there, um, with the, uh, early retirement incentive, uh, there will be some extra costs with that, but that can also, um, chip away at that deficit there. And then in 27, 28, you see a deficit of 2.78 million. I would not lose sleep over this, it's not uncommon to see a deficit in the out-year of two. Um, we've had them in the past where it's been as high as 6, 7, and 8, and it doesn't, it doesn't materialize. So overall, we feel pretty good here, uh, with the out-years, and because we're able to, uh, meet our obligations, uh, that'll be on the next slide, the one after, but let's just go to this. This is a positive certification. The, um, we always want to proceed with caution, we know we have some certainties in this district, as in just about every district in California, and out of all the districts in Orange County, there's only one where enrollment is going up, everyone else has declining enrollment, uh, for various reasons of lower birth rates, some people are moving out of the areas, so we have declining enrollment. Health costs continue to, to just keep going up, and high STIRS and PERS employer rates. There are some uncertainties, though, TK, Kinder enrollment. We have seen less kids entering TK and Kinder, it's, it just has to do with the birth rates. In a 10-year period in California, from 2010 to 2020, uh, the number of live births went down about 18%. For our district, if you look at what our enrollment did five years later in a 10-year period, we went down about 17.9%. So we kind of mirror what's happening in the state, less people, people are having not as many kids, for a wide variety of reasons that we don't need to go into here, uh, just know that that is happening. Our attendance rate, 97, is, it's pretty conservative, could we get it higher? Uh, every percentage, if, if we got up to 98, that's, that can be an extra million, million and a half dollars for our district. But also keep in mind, if it goes down to 96%, that can go a million dollars the other way. So it just takes one really bad flu seasons, but that's why we continue to do, uh, give parents and students an opportunity to make up days on Saturday schools, independent study, to keep that attendance rate high. Um, there, uncertainty about the state deficit and what funding's going to look like for next year, we'll see that in January, when the governor comes out, uh, with his, uh, projections. COLA is projected to be a little lower next year, but in the out-year, a little higher. So we need to watch for that. Some un- uncertainties about the Fed's response to inflation, what's the Fed going to do with that? Um, if they bring it down, that can help the housing market, it can help the economy. As that goes, so the stock market and the economy, stock market's at an all-time high right now. Sometimes you hear the R-word, recession, so we need to be kind of watching for that. And then, of course, there's still uncertainties in the Middle East, Ukraine, Venezuela, all over the board, all over the world, and so it just takes something to happen that can start spinning us out of control and the economy as that goes. So these are uncertainties, nothing really new, they've always been there. Um, so the district certification, uh, our end fund balance is projected to be above the 3% reserve, so staff recommends a positive certification on the next page, Anna. And a positive certification indicates that this district is able to meet its financial obligations for the current year and the following few years. So what are our next steps? We submit this report to the Orange County Department of Ed, we watch the governor's proposed budget, which comes out here in January, we're going to continue to monitor spending and revenue, uh, and we're gonna, Damian's going to take, uh, about four weeks off. And then get ready, well, he's actually going to work on, he's going to work on 1099 forms and W2s and all of those things for January, uh, but it really picks up back again, uh, February 1st, when Damian will start working on the second interim report and staff, and then we'll be back here in March to present that, where then he'll get a couple weeks off until he starts planning for the, for the budget for next year. So with that, I do want to, before I take any questions, I want to thank Damian and, and Joanne and staff for putting this together and working with all the different departments of the district. Uh, Damian, oh, and Joanne, they always do a great job on this presentation, uh, they are really the ones doing the work. I get the easy job here, I just get to come up and just talk about it, but they're the ones that are really behind the scenes, so I want to thank them. And with that, are there any questions? And no, on this last picture, that is not Ruthie as a child. I know we thought that, but I tried to get, but that's as close as I could get. And Ruth, and by the way, Ruth, that child's asking a question, is Ruthie would ask a question. So with that, are there any questions?
Ruthie?
Any questions?
Madam President?
I sat down with Rob earlier this week, and we went over it with a fine-tooth, whatever, a.
Fine-tooth comb.
Fine-tooth comb. So I got most of my questions answered, and I just am grateful for the work, and, and the, I have confidence in the work of our staff and, and you, Rob, and your leadership of keeping us in, you know, positive. And I especially, I appreciate, we discussed that when we have extra money at the end, we come, we've come back to our associations multiple times and said, you know, how do we want to spend this extra money? Because I think that that, we invest in our people, and it means a lot.
We've, we've had that two years in a row, and I think this year could be, maybe not as big, but a small amount, but, you know, Dr. Hammond and I make that pledge that we'll do that.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the district's first interim financial report with a positive certification? First date guidelines, a positive certification indicates that based upon current projections, the district will meet its financial obligations for the current and subsequent two fiscal years.
So move.
So move?
Second.
Seconded by Barryman? Okay, any further discussion?
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, and thank you for sticking around and, and watching the presentation as well.
Okay.
Rob?
Just wanted to say, um, it's my last, um, first interim, and, but I wanted to mention, uh, we talk about innovation in different ways, um, Rob is one, is the most innovative, uh, system bu- business I've ever met, and when, uh, it was given free and reduced lunch to every, every child, uh, and a, a free meal, um, a lot of districts, uh, the actual free and reduced or unduplicated accounts went down because there wasn't an incentive for people, uh, to apply. And, um, one of the things Rob's did is basically set up a process where he called people and, and, and said, it matters that the funding that your child will receive by doing this goes, and it does, it goes back to the school. And so for people who just found out it matters enough to fill out the application, and as a result of that, while most districts were actually seeing a de- uh, a decrease, uh, in unduplicated, um, our districts saw an increase. And that was his innovation, his idea, and he worked with his team. Um, and then also shout out to Joanne and Damian, and all the good work that they've done over the years, um, to help stabilize us. We're in, financially, is probably one of the best positions I've seen, uh, in a multi-year, um, a budget, and it's because we have good people, and so it's not an accident, and, um, just, he has a phenomenal team, but he's a phenomenal leader, too.
Thank you. Okay, so we, I asked, you had a motion, we had a second, so we will vote, starting with trustee Alvarez.
Yes, aye.
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 James?
Aye.
Okay, he's still there. An aye for myself, great. So we are at the final, thank you, Dr. Rob, uh, section of our agenda, board member requests for future items. I will ask my fellow trustees, is there any items that we would like to bring, either for future agenda items, or at this point to call out for, communicate, follow-up conversations?
Um, I, I want to say that we already spoke about this, but, um, I would like to bring back the Facilatron revised access policy as to who exactly is coming to our school grounds and how we can keep track of, um, exactly who's going to be in charge of checking people coming in, um, I don't care about going out, but coming into, to our schools, um, specifically the ones that share our fields. I mean, all of them, but, you know.
Vanessa, can I ask if you were to review that?[1799.76] Vanessa, can I ask if you were to review that, and if you have either questions, that we could pose those to the staff to answer? If you have suggested amendments, recommendations, or changes, then it would be brought back as an agenda item that we could propose?
I would love to be able to see principal, to get principal input as to, because it was brought to my attention by two different principals in our district, that they had concerns about who was coming in. So I would love to be able to not just have them look into who is accessing, you know, who's accessing our school, but also get principal input.
Yeah.
From the school.
Implementation.
And their recommendations as well.
So does that maybe a working group, something that staff could convene to review that?
Yeah.
Like, actually, implementation of the policy in practice?
Yeah, and we can bring it back.
Okay. Okay, so that would be a report that we would expect to see in the future, then? Okay? And then action, if necessary, to make changes based on those recommendations? Okay? Thank you very much. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay? And we will adjourn this meeting at, well, let me say, the next meeting of the board will be on Tuesday, January 20th, so we will adjourn at 10:41.
Good night, James.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, James.
Bye, James.